Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 10th, 2023, Marlington Local School District Board of Education Work Session. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan?
Here.
Karen Humphreys?
Here.
Kathy Crebko?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mark Ryan?
Yes.
Jonathan Swift?
Yes.
Josh Hagan?
Yes.
Karen Humphreys?
Yes.
Kathy Crebko?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, new business. Pupil Service Update, Mr. Evanich.
Well, good evening. Thanks for having me join you this evening. We've got a little slideshow for you here up above, but I'll talk you through it as well.
Hey, Nick, pull that mic closer to you a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so here we go. Starting year two, I learned a lot the first year, like everything that was on my plate. Mr. Swisher told me two of these things when he hired me. So, but this is quite the majority of what we do in our office and what we're in charge of in special services there. And we're kind of going to talk through just about all of those here in the next couple of slides, just to give you a little update of what's going on there. Now, this is not exact. We're in the summer here. We've got a lot of kids still not enrolled, you know, coming in, whether they moved over the summer or whatnot, but pretty close numbers right here. We currently have 314 students. We're expecting to have on IEPs this year. The 33 of those, as you can see, are open enrolled in. 11 are court placed into our district, and then you can see the numbers out as well. We do have 22 students currently educated who are scheduled to be educated outside of our district. EAs, Educational Alternatives, specialized school in Ravenna that services some of our students. Lake Center Christian, the Super Learning Center, and the Stark County Learning Center. The Stark County Learning Center used to be called DAY. They've moved to North Canton now, to their old elementary school, and taken that facility over. Some of those students, we work with the families to find the best location for their education. Some of them choose to use the John Peterson Scholarship or the Autism Scholarship to attend some of those places. Students not on IEPs. We have 135 on 504s typically for a medical situation of some sort. It could be diabetes, it could be ADHD, it could be seizures, a variety of things there, but there's the breakdown of what comprises those 135 students. All right, safety, AEDs and grants here. I was fortunate enough last year to be selected and become a certified trainer along with Chad Smith and Krista Gerhardt. Chad is from the Stark County Sheriff's Office. Krista is from Canton Local. We trained, we did six training sessions last year in Stark County and the surrounding counties, and I would say we trained upwards of 500 individuals on the comprehensive threat assessment. Here at Marlington, we have six threat assessment teams, five building teams, one district team. We are required to have teams for middle school and high school. However, we felt it was worthy to have it from K-12 all the way through. Those teams are comprised of 17 staff members. Several staff members are on multiple teams, like your resource officers, myself, our school psychologists, and some of those folks are on multiple teams. Our safety grant. Mr. Davis, do you want me to just kind of briefly go over this and you'll hit the rundown you did earlier?
Okay.
I don't want to steal his thunder. So as you know, we were fortunate enough to receive the $500,000 safety grant, and that is getting put to work here within the last several days and in the coming months, and I'm going to let Ben expand on that in his section. I was able to attend the Ohio Safety Summit this year. It was outstanding, but out of that, I learned some different things, including two upcoming trainings that we'll be going to. One is an after-school preparedness training for threats after school and some planning on what we can do to be more prepared for that. And the other one through the Stark County Sheriff's Office is rural crisis management training. We've had, Mr. Collins has already been training that, Deputy Collins, but Deputy Miller and myself will be attending that one as well. There's a new law coming, but we're ahead of it thanks to Mr. Swisher years ago with the AEDs and grants that you have to have an AED, I believe it's going to say, if it passes, it has not passed yet, you must have an AED in every building. We have 15 AEDs throughout our five campuses. We bought eight or nine brand-new ones last year to update the ones we had, and we have some other ones that are still going, but those are, like I said, throughout our campuses and accessible just about everywhere within a matter of seconds. We did receive over $23,000 in homeless grants last year that we'll be using to assist our students who are experiencing homelessness. And just this summer, we got notice of two separate grants we got from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation for over $17,000. Today, our floor scrubbing machine that was purchased as one of those grants arrived today. We've got four more things on order. And then I also have another one for $15,000 and another $27,000 I'm going to go after next through the BWC for some different things. So there we go. Paraprofessionals, so these folks really, really help assist our teachers and our kids a ton. So these are often called aides, student aides. They work with the students. We have 17 throughout the district. Obviously, when you have your more intensive needs and your special units, you're going to have more aides in those locations and more at the elementary level, including three at the preschool that come to us as part of our ESC preschool program. But you can see what they do, but these people are tremendous, and they're community members, and they love kids, and I think they really, really do it because of their love of kids. It's definitely not for a lot of other reasons. Preschool. So we've got two classrooms at Lexington St. Elementary, four classes, two preschool in the morning, two in the afternoon, two teachers there doing an outstanding job with those aides that we mentioned in the last slide. That is run through the ESC. There's currently 28 scheduled to be there in person. I'm sorry, there's 28 on IEPs. There's actually 56 students in the preschool program. And then there's six, itinerately, so if they're not going to come to school for whatever reason and they're on an IEP, they have received services from an intervention specialist. Maybe they meet at the library, maybe they meet at the school, maybe they go to a different preschool, and we go there and they provide a room for our intervention specialist. And when I say "our," it's a county intervention specialist because this is through the county. We do have 24 children right now on the wait list. That's a mistake. I should say 12 four-year-olds and 12 three-year-olds didn't make 24. It's been a while since I taught math. All right, testing coordinator. We pretty much are given a test about every week of the year in some way or shape or form, unfortunately. Not for every kid, obviously. But we have Ohio State test, the ALPA is a language test, the MAPS test really helps our teachers to plan and reach our students. Obviously, the ACT, it's a one-day thing, but it's a great service to our juniors. Every junior gets to take the ACT at no cost to them. It's a great opportunity for the kids and so forth. But there's a lot of computerized stuff and planning and connecting the dots and making sure everybody's ready to do, but fortunately, we got through that last year successfully, so go from there. Homeless and foster care. We currently have 11 students identified as homeless in our district and 13 that are in foster care. And then we have 29 students who are residents or were residents of our district that are placed out of our district so that basically their home that they're being placed in right now is not in our district. You know, we don't control that. You know, they are referred to a foster family, they've got to find those families that fit wherever they are and get those kids in those situations to hopefully get them back in their regular homes eventually. So our FSSs, our Family Support Specialists, are tremendous in assisting with this. Obviously, families that are in this situation, you know, it's not comfortable to talk about. And so these ladies, Jill Ginther and Crystal Sourwine, do a tremendous job of communicating with the families, connecting them with services, and then taking really good care of the kids and then also, when they're here at school, keeping an eye on them as well. Nursing, we have two part-time nurses that equate to one full-time nurse that are here in our district throughout the week. They work with our staff, our administrators, and everyone there to make sure things are up to speed with students' vaccinations and so forth, those traditional things, but also vision screenings, hearing screenings, and things like that. The Lions Club has reached out. They want to get back in and do their vision screening again. It's a group that kind of stepped away through all the COVID stuff, and they're ready to come back in now and help screen kids and stuff. And then they also do a great job of looking to help provide things for kids who can't afford that vision care sometimes, so it's a great group to connect with. Our nurses are also going to be working on the seizure guidance and plans that we have to have in place with the new laws for our students to make sure everybody's safe and in good hands. Related services, so these are all the different individuals that come in and do things. Our psychologists, we have two here that work with our kids, our speech-language pathologists, we have two there as well, plus a third that supports us. When you get into these other areas, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and so forth, those are employees that are coming to us from the ESC. You know, we don't have enough need to hire our own occupational therapists, plus they specialize a lot of times in different age groups of children and stuff. So they're typically in our district maybe two days a week or something, and then into another district, and it just depends. Especially in audiology, you know, we might have four or five kids total they're working with from year to year, things like that. Basically, working here with the treasurer on the finances of a lot of things, in this case, the safety grants, the homeless grants, the special education funding, some SIR funding, working with Renee to make sure that we are on the same page with curriculum and special education, and then obviously, you know, all other duties as assigned by the superintendent would be that other bullet point. And this is the glue. Shelley Ramsey holds together the special services department and everything there. It's her third year with us. She works with Renee and myself and just makes sure that everything's in line, all the paperwork, all the dates and everything, and she's done a tremendous job in taking over for a legend in Margaret Wallace, who held that position previously for many, many years, and Shelley's doing a tremendous job, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Nick? We do. How many IEPs are getting first evaluations or reevaluations annually out of the 500 and some? Are we doing 100 a year?
There's 330 there. Those will be on a three-year cycle. We're probably at 150. Talking with some of our county folks who do the position I do but have much more experience, they feel like we're in a good place right now in terms of our caseloads for our school psychologists, so that's where we're at right now. I will say, the preschool, so Help Me Grow works with students up through the age of three, and then they refer kids for testing oftentimes, and that number has exploded throughout the county, not just us, but we're seeing more and more children referred to us for testing at the age of three through that Help Me Grow program and just needing services, so that is something we've got to watch.
And it's my understanding that we're also responsible for, even though they're out of district placed, we still have to know what's going on in their IEPs, and we're held responsible and accountable for those IEPs, correct?
Correct. We have staff members who are assigned to, if you're a psychologist, we have a set, Becca Ryan does our out-of-district evaluations, Michelle McElrath writes our out-of-district IEPs, and we have to keep those updated, and then if they choose to go elsewhere, then that's the rejection of fate, and then it's up to the school they go to what they do, but we have to keep everything legal and current.
Are we working on any plan? You said we're getting a lot of referrals for three-year-olds, and we have 20-some kids or more on the waiting list already. Are we starting to develop some sort of plan to take care of those kids?
So the waitlist are classmates. Those are students who are not on IEP
Okay.
but are looking for preschool opportunities, and so they sign up, and as students rotate through, they come in. Yes, those are not students on IEPs.
But they're in, those are students who are in district?
Yes.
Are they?
Yes, every preschool student is in district. There is no open enrollment at the preschool level.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My question really is to IEPs also, just in general, and I don't know if you'll have this information, but overall, do you have a general, even percentage of how it's been increasing over a certain period of time? I mean, you kind of talked about it exploding with the younger, but you know, like now, and can you give us a general number, like a percentage of it's this much more than it was maybe five years ago?
Yeah, I would refer to the former Director of Pupil Services on that question.
Mr. Swisher.
We were, prior to me taking over the position, we had Ms. Bio. It's over in Canton City right now, and when Ms. Bio took over, we were high. The state came in and said, according to your population, you were, we were probably close to 24, 25% on IEPs. The state said, that's ridiculous based on your current enrollment. So she worked extremely hard to get that down, and where the state feels is appropriate number, which is typically between 12 and 15% of your enrollment. So we're currently still holding steady. Since she's left, we've stayed right around, I think we're at like 12.6, maybe 13% of our population is on IEPs. And we can kind of do the math with his 300 versus, you know, I'm going to talk about enrollment tonight, where we've been for the last five years, but we stayed, we have not, our, we basically, with our enrollment decline over the last five years, our students with disabilities have also kind of mimicked that. So we've been very aware, so it really has not, we have not seen like an enrollment decline but an increase in students with disabilities. It's kind of been a match.
Do we have ED units at every level? Do we have elementary, middle school, and high school?
We have multiple handicap units or cross-categorical units. We do not have emotional disturbed units in our district. We use our other county partners for that, just based on numbers, and very few districts have their own classroom for that because fortunately, you don't have the quantity. When we talk about OT, PT, audiology, all the things that we get from Stark, from the ESC and the paraprofessionals, do, is that part of the fee that we already pay them, or do we pay additional money for those services to the ESC? Yeah, so the aides would be a part of the preschool program, and you know, part of that is included in some of that, but also it doesn't cover everything. In terms of the OT, PT, and those types of services, those are billed to us because they're constantly changing, and how many students need OT this year, how many minutes are needed for PT this year and so forth. So those are billed each year specifically to the minutes, and we get reports of how many minutes who spends with each student.
Yep. I also will be addressing that in my slides, just our, some of our ESC costs, if you have an idea when it comes specifically to contract purchase services.
Are we reimbursed, though, by insurances and welfare for OT, PT when it's required?
So...
Or am I jumping ahead?
We, 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 every time we have an evaluation, one of the things we need to do is notify the families and ask for their consent to bill Medicaid, and then we bill. We never know who gets it, who doesn't get it, who's approved for it, but then they take a look at that to see if we can get some reimbursement for those services.
But it's not full, it doesn't cover?
Oh, no.
No, it varies between $40,000 and $80,000. I mean, we could get an exact figure, I don't have that. I mean, it wasn't, you know, based on what we get back in Medicaid reimbursement, and then obviously, you know, Nick works with the treasurer's office on catastrophic costs, so we had to, we do get re-incurd costs for specific students that go well above and beyond the normal cost of just a general specialized student.
Okay.
You might have, you know, students that have severe needs that might have to have multiple one-on-one aides or things like that, so we can file for catastrophic costs to reimburse us a little bit more than what we get for federal money on that end for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Curriculum, Mrs. Kaylee.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. So we are going to take just a little bit of time to go over some things since the last time we met, some updates in regards to the school year and some new laws that came about with House Bill 33, just to keep everybody abreast of some of the changes. We're going to talk about resident educators, student teachers, and field placement, as well as our shared leadership model, talk a little bit about our dyslexia law and third grade reading guarantee, as well as some changes in law with English Language Arts and the Science of Reading, and then talk about some of my goals for us as a staff for 2324 in regards to curriculum. Just so that everybody here is aware, we talked last year about our resident educator program. It has now been condensed into a two-year program instead of a four-year program, which over the summer, Alicia Gray, who has, used to be our, she was our resident educator, lead mentor last year, she and I worked hard over the summer to revamp our program because we have, in the past, have had 100% of our resident educator candidates that take the REZA, which is that summative assessment that you need to pass in order to complete resident educator. We've had 100% success rate first time they've taken it, so I'm very confident in the program that we have provided at Marlington, and so we wanted to make sure that we were able to recreate that into a two-year program. And so our lead mentor this year is Amy Coman. We currently have 12 teachers that are in the program. We do have year one and year twos. We also have year three, which may seem funny because you're like, it's only a two-year program, Renee. These are those folks that were kind of caught in the middle of the transition. So those year threes are only taking their resident educator summative assessment this year. They're not getting any mentoring, and Teresa Phillips is going to serve as their facilitator to help guide and support them through that process. And we, out of those 12, we have nine of them taking that REZA this year. I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing to work with them. It is a very valuable process, you know, it really is important to, the reason it was created is we want to keep folks in our profession, and we had found, not myself, but research had shown that in the first five years that they didn't have that mentorship, folks were leaving, and so we really want to make our teachers that are coming to us new feel welcome, feel like this is something that they want to stay in, and having those mentors and that guidance is a pivotal part of that. After, and we have student teachers and field placement. One of the things that I do is connect with our local universities and colleges to ensure that we're providing opportunities for current college students to come in and obtain field work experience as well as complete their actual clinical experiences in student teaching. We currently have 12 students completing either their field placement work or their student teaching work in our district. All five of our buildings are supporting this process, and you can see the, as of right now, for the fall, these are the five that we have, universities or colleges that we have representation from across those, with those 12 students. I will tell you, it is, I am very thankful to our building principals and our teachers for opening up their buildings to this. It is a very valuable partnership. We actually have, I will tell you, we've hired some of our student teachers onboard, full-time staff for next year or for this upcoming school year, so to be able to do that, it excites me because we already know what we're getting, you know? We know that they put in the work, they love Marlington, and they're excited to be here, so it allows us to kind of form those partnerships with our local universities, and our teachers are willing to do that, so kudos to them. We are, once again, we really made sure, last year, Dan, Nick, and myself really made sure that we kind of reset this shared leadership process in regards to ensuring that we have representation at county-level meetings so that our teachers are bringing back, you know, the newest trends, looking at the data, you know, and bringing back best practices to our district and sharing those with other colleagues. And so we do have representation at all of these different lead teacher meetings throughout the year. They're typically held, hmm, not once a month, maybe four or five times throughout the year, so we do have representation going to each of those. We also are continuing to participate in the ACE program, and that's the Advancing the Capacity of Educators. Last year, we had K-5 math and ELA representatives. This year, we will have six through 12 ELA and math representatives. Once again, they go through, go to the meetings, get particular training, come back then, and share it with our, with our staff. And then we also, as an admin team, we're participating in the administrative team ACE program, and then we will continue with having our monthly district leadership team meetings, building leadership team, and TBTs. And that structure has allowed for us really to have buy-in and to have the decisions made, not by the top, they're made by everybody, including our, including our teachers. The dyslexia law updates, I shared this last year, you know, we had, we're required now to have what's called a structured literacy certification process. We do. We have, last year, all of our kindergarten and first-grade teachers took part in dyslexia training. They completed 18 hours and got certified. This year, we will be working with our second and third-grade teachers as well as our intervention specialists that support those grade levels, as well as all of our K-5 title tutors. So that will meet the mark for this year, and then next year, it'll be grades four through 12 intervention specialists will have to be trained. So that is in relation to Ohio revised code, so we've not only have that certification process in place, we've also moved forward and we've provided that professional development. And just so that the board knows, we did opt to utilize ODE's free modules, so instead of paying to, there were, you know, all of a sudden, when that law passed, there were lots of different folks providing training resources at a cost. So we opted to do that, it went very well, so we're excited to move that forward with our grades two and three teachers. And then our third-grade reading guarantee, these things came, updates came from House Bill 33. If you know that parents now may require their child be promoted to fourth grade after consulting with teachers and principal, that means that if their student doesn't pass that third-grade reading test, the Ohio State test, parents can request now that their student move on. That was not the case in the past. But we must provide a statement that connects the child's proficiency level and reading to long-term outcomes, so we've revamped all of our letters that are going home already to ensure that they have the statement in there, and we also, I'm very proud of our team because it also added the requirement this year that the intensive reading instruction must align with the Science of Reading. Two years ago, when I came onboard, we revamped all of our intervention resources, K-5, to mirror the Science of Reading and to take on that, so we don't have to make any changes. We are already doing what they're requiring us to do. We also, RIMPs must now have what's called high dosage tutoring in addition to the other requirements. Once again, we are already doing this. We began this two years ago. We are meeting, our students go five days a week for at least 30 minutes a day, so for that intensive tutoring, so to speak. So once again, we were already ahead of the, ahead of the ball when it comes to meeting these requirements. And then we also must continue to provide RIMP services and still students receive required level of reading for their current grade level. So what that means is if a student's on a RIMP, that's a reading improvement monitoring plan, because we've determined them to be off track by our diagnostic, we're going to continue to provide those intervention services until they've reached their grade level. It's a lot, it's a lot there. So then with the, with English Language Arts and the Science of Reading, if you remember last year, we, I presented about potentially doing a curriculum adoption committee for K-5 ELA, and we had received that, what's it, $200,000, $200,000 literacy grant. We kind of held off on purchasing anything because ODE gave us the heads-up of, hey, House Bill 33, you're probably going to want to hold off on purchasing any type of core curriculum for ELA because there are going to be some new requirements, and so we heard them loud and clear, and we paused, and we are going to actually do that curriculum committee this year, knowing that some of these things have to be in place. There are going to be specific requirements for what curriculum can be used to teach students to read, so if we're thinking primarily in your K-2 classrooms, the Department of Education workforce is going to establish a PD committee for reading and identifying approved vendors, so they're going to actually approve the vendors that we can then choose, and then we must start using these, something from that list, in next school year. So I say all that to say, I'm thankful, once again, that we didn't move forward with that curriculum adoption because... that curriculum adoption, because I would have hate to have wasted our money. So, we will wait until this comes out, and then we'll start doing that process of that curriculum adoption for that core curriculum in K-5.
Do you have a timeframe, are they giving you a timeframe for when that's coming out?
No, no, unfortunately, no. You know, typically, what happens is when these laws go into effect, then ODE then has to trans, you know, basically, translate the law and figure out, how are we going to then implement this? So, I have not gotten any word on when. We do have the grant that we received. We are training folks in Wilson, so we'll have seven individuals across our elementary buildings trained in Wilson, which is like a $30,000 training, which is all being paid for through the grant. So, I'm thankful for that, and it, once again, aligns with the Science of Reading. But, as soon as we get, catch wind of that, then we'll be able to start our process of looking at what we want to bring into Marlinton. And then, just some of the goals for this year. You know, we, this year, we are going to have a new instructional coach, Kim Herman, who has been with us for many years, has moved into our new elementary instructional coach role. We are excited to have her in that position. We are going to continue, like I said, our dyslexia training. Our focus this year will be on small group reading instruction, so how do we meet the needs of all students through small groups? Also, the implementation of Invision, that is our K-5 math curriculum that we adopted and implemented year one last year, and then the potential ELA curriculum adoption, probably, I don't know, whenever we get the guidance to move forward with that. My goal this year is to be much more present in our middle school and high school buildings. I thought, I have really spent the past two years rebuilding, helping to rebuild our K-5 programs, and I think we're in a really good place, and it's time for me now to move on to 612 and plant myself there. We want to continue our assessment literacy work that we've started. We are also going to be doing what's called depth of knowledge questioning in classrooms to make sure that we have rigor in our lessons and what we are, questions that we are asking our students. And then, we're also going to focus on utilizing MAP data to drive our instruction. So, how do we really use this data to inform what we're doing in the classrooms? And then, as a district, just so the board knows that we, you've heard me talk often of our ONE Plan, we are in year three, the final year of our ONE Plan. So, this year, we will have to complete a, what's called a ONE Needs Assessment, again, and then formulate a new three-year plan. So, we'll be finishing up, you know, working through year three of this plan, doing the needs assessment, and completing, creating a whole nother plan. So, there will be a lot of overlap this year and a lot of work that our district leadership team and our building leadership teams will be doing to make sure that this happens. And remember that this is a requirement through the state. It's not a Marlinton thing, it's not a Renee thing, it's a, it is truly, every district in the state of Ohio is now required to create a ONE Plan, and it is tied to your federal funding. And that is all I have for you this evening. I put any questions up there, but I don't know if anybody has any for me.
Okay.
I have one too.
Go ahead. You go first.
When you, we're talking about the, that whole thing with the third graders who might not pass that test, and then...
Yes.
So, how does that, I mean, there has to be thought as to how that impacts things further down the road, then, if, if, if a parent says, "Yes, I want my student to..."
Sure. So, part of the requirement is if a student does move on to fourth grade that didn't meet the promotional score, we are required to provide them the intensive tutoring as well. So, those fourth graders will be part of the, pretty much, the third-grade title tutoring that we do. Yep, so we, I think it's, I don't know the exact numbers of the requirements of the out, of the minutes, but yes, they will be part of, and they'll have their own RIM for fourth grade, they'll receive specific services, in addition to their general classroom instruction in English Language Arts.
Those one-on-one services, or the small group?
They are not, they're small group. They are small group. We do, in K-1 to 2, we do a pre-teach of Haggerty, and then we do a double dose of foundations. And so, that's getting their, getting our students their phonics and their phonemic awareness skills, because that's what they need to have in order to decode, so in order to decode words. So, those are the things we're doing in K-2. In third grade, we start to transition to, if they are decoding and it's a comprehension issue, we're starting to move more into passages and using things like LLI, and we use learning A to Z, reading A to Z for that. So, they are small groups based upon, anywhere between three and five students are in the group, depending on the group, the kids, you know, and their needs. Good question. Now, the Wilson that I'm sending folks to this year, that Wilson training is more one-on-one, and those would be your tier three. So, those are the kiddos that are getting their, their core instruction in the classroom, right? Small group, whole group, they're getting tier two, so they're also going to that tier two, which I just talked about, and they're maybe still not making the growth that we're, we need them to make, or that we are expecting them to make, then they would move on to a tier three also, and get that one-on-one. We currently don't have that in place.
Are we seeing progress and recovery from COVID?
Absolutely, absolutely. I will tell you, I get goosebumps, because we, each year, you know, our K-2 kiddos, we are seeing them, I had teachers say to me this year, "Mrs. Kaylee, my kids are going into second grade as readers," you know, and where there were huge gaps in years prior, you know? And so, to see that, and to see it in our MAP data, and to see it in our, our Haggerty and our, and our foundations data, it's pretty exciting. Yeah. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Renee, on the residential educator program...
Yeah.
Are you seeing a, a mix of staff, like young, in-between, veterans participating in that?
Do you mean as far, so the RE program is for brand-new teachers?
Oh, brand-new.
Yes, so that's for, when you graduate from college, you are issued a resident educator license. And it used to be a four-year license, you had four years to complete all the different activities...
Okay.
And then, you take that resident educator assessment, as long as you meet all the requirements, you pass your assessment, you then can move, advance your licensure to a five-year professional license. So, they're brand-new. So, it just depends on the age of the student, right? So, we do have some folks that have gone back as a second career, education as a second career. Typically, though, they are younger students...
Right, okay.
That are coming straight out of college, and that's where they'll have the two-year program now. And then, if they pass, they move on to the five-year professional license. And our, all, I'm sorry, all of our mentors have been trained, so they're, it's not like we can just pair them up with anyone, they have to be a trained mentor.
Got you. On that $200,000 grant, how much, what's the, do you envision that all being spent in one shot?
No, we've spent some of it already, so let me, it's a good question. So, it has to be spent all out by September of 2024. So, we have all of this year to, so what happened last year, it was to pay for the teams' after-hours, we meet every month for about 10 hours. So, for the teachers and stuff that are on that grant team, there's a lot of homework, there's a lot of work, because it's a federal grant, we have projects and stuff to do and turn in for them. It went to PD, and that was the bulk of last year. This year, it's going towards to train the Wilsons, the teachers in Wilson. It's also purchasing our NWEA MAP fluency program, which is now, we are required to screen all K-3 students for dyslexia. That is covering that screener for us. It's also paying for NWEA MAP growth, which is something that we're using to, for the goal group one, which, goal one, which is every student will show a year's worth of growth in math in ELA, so we're using it to pay for that. We also had to purchase specific headphones to be able to take the MAP fluency, because students will have the headphones on and be reading into the microphone, and it records them. So, so far, that is what we've spent. We have, we have about almost $90,000 left right now, and that monies is being held on to, to be able to use towards a curriculum. Yep, good question.
Okay. So, we're looking at, we like the retention that we get from the resident educator thing, we're keeping teachers and doing that.
Yes.
And this is kind of an out-there question.
That's okay.
As an RN, I could go, with any health-related degree, I could go for two years and get a degree to have, to get my RN license. Is there any programs like that? Are we, are we seeing a shortage of teachers in this state? And is there programs like that, where if you already have a bachelor's degree in some area, where you can expedite your teachings?
Yes and yes. Yes, we are seeing a shortage across the nation. COVID, there was a mass exodus of educators. And so, we are seeing, our edge, our programs and our local universities have not filled to capacity like they have in the past. They're starting to regain over the past, I would say, year or so, those entry-level courses are, they're starting to regain some, what's the word I'm looking for?
Capacity.
Yes, thank you. I'm like, what is that word? Regained capacity. We, those that are, have already had a bachelor's in another field, there is an expedited process for them to be able to become educators. So, that is a yes.
Is it effective? Has it been proven to be effective?
Yeah, I think it is. It's just, it, the difficulty is, just to be completely transparent, is a lot of times, folks are going to leave a job and come to teaching as an entry-level teacher, where the starting pay is not high. So, it's just, it's difficult to recruit those individuals, because they may already be making double what they would make after going back and getting that certification, and then coming into a year one as a, as a certified teacher. Okay, thank you.
I would say that plan is most successful in the career tech world.
Yeah.
That's where we get a lot of our career tech teachers coming from industry, and there's special programs set up for them, and it, it really works well.
Good question. Are we looking at expanding careers? Am I jumping ahead again? Is this part of curriculum?
Okay. I'll wait that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go ahead and have, ask Ms. Kaylee, Mr. Revanich, if they want to go. I know he's got some family obligations, and so does Ms. Kaylee tonight, so if you guys are okay, I'm gonna excuse them, if you have any more questions for them.
Sure.
Thank you both very much. Sorry, Bob, you guys...
All right, Bob, your family doesn't count.
Nice try.
Hey, Bob, we're here too.
We have to say, "Here too."
We just bring ours with us.
I can tell you, the, the team we have here, Mr. Revanich, Ms. Kaylee, Bob and I, I mean, we do have a standing meeting every Monday. I mean, it's how we accomplish pretty much what they kind of went through in a nutshell, in a very brief show of what goes on in our district at a year's time. There's just a lot of conversation, a lot of parts and pieces, you know? We're not, we're not a large team, but we accomplish a lot, so our administrators do a lot, so it's good. I just want to kind of give you guys a little overview of some things going on this past year, so that's why we had them come onboard. Okay, so, this is our update for our work session. This is gonna be Mr. Fosses and I's update, so we're kind of got different slides that affect each of us, or we'll kind of chime in and kind of, you know, both affect finances when you're both talking about finances, projects, staffing, different things that I said we'd, we'd talk about moving forward. Sticking with my theme, that I have no thing of changing, is, you know, we do care about every minute, every moment, every memory in this district. So, we're gonna talk about tonight, we're gonna talk about our summer projects, we're gonna touch a little bit on enrollment, staffing, purchase services, we're gonna talk about finances, then we're gonna talk about some things, goals, I would say, or moving forward, what, what's important that I feel that we need to talk about this upcoming year, and then obviously, if you guys feel that I want to look at things differently, this would be the time for us to just, you know, be able to banter and talk about that a little bit. It's kind of why I like a work session, because we can have a little bit more of a conversation. All right, so we did, as you know, we did, we have a lot of summer projects going on this year. We got door projects, we got paving projects, landscaping, additional cement and wall restoration projects here. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna jump out, I'm gonna jump into a different slideshow here. So, I'm gonna give the slideshow credit to Al. Al's hiding back there, he's here for moral support.
Yay!
Good job.
All right, so, Al, Al and I have a, have a, have a daily standing meeting, probably every single day of the year, outside of holidays or weekends, we meet every day, just to be clear, Al and I do stand, meet every day. So, let's talk about the high school roof. So, we did phase one, we appreciate the board going through with the high school roof. Al can chime in here if I miss anything, so this, this kind of started off, it was, you know, a million-dollar project. Not quite a million, but that's where we were at for phase one of the roof. So, there's a little bit of pictures of the tear-off, gives you an idea, you know, and there's some of the cracks, you know? If you peel off the roof, you see some of the, the cracks, and that's not, it's not uncommon for that, there's nothing wrong with that, just when you peel the roof off, you're gonna, you'll show, well, you know, where you gotta kind of shore up some different issues there. There's a picture of what some of our old drains look like up there, picture of what the new drain looks like now. All right, so you get, you know, the difference between the two. This is an, an edge section.
Hey, Dan.
Yeah.
How old is this roof that was taken off or replaced?
You know what, that's a great question, I'm not sure how old the roof is.
Couldn't be the original.
It may be, it may be the original.
Wow.
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I can tell you, we have not addressed the roof in my eyes, it's been 19 years, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's, it's close to the original. So, it's well, it's well-held its life.
Yeah.
Those are little edge section here that we had to rip off, get an idea what you're seeing from the edge. There's an edge from a different look. Uh, once the tear-off's complete, that's kind of where you're at. All right, we get the whole tear-off done, and where you're at for there. You know, then we gotta install the membrane, so they'll basically put that down. And that, after that membrane is down, your roof is pretty much sealed. I mean, if you want to equate it to your roof, you know, typically, they put a membrane before they shingle over your roof, you know, to keep it kind of sealed in that end, so that's, that's what that's is. After that, we, they have the installation of two, two layers, two-inch insulation, which goes over top that membrane. Give you an idea of those, the picture, the pictures there. Then, we install the, the tremply. It was funny, I shared this, we've spent the last two days in a retreat with the admin team, and we, I just wanted to give them an update, so they could obviously see what, you know, some of these pictures, and they asked what the tremply was, and Al answered it very quickly, he said, "It's a pool liner." That's a simple way to put it. You know, it's a pool liner. Another couple pictures of that being laid.
They gotta be dying up on that roof in that heat with those outfits.
Now, this is, this was an excellent group.
Dry fit.
They were, there was 19, 19 workers there that worked long hours and good days, but they really worked hard to get through the project.
They worked on the Fourth of July, too, I think.
They were there on Fourth of July, they were, you know, if it was, the weather held, they were out there. They, they came through. Another, you know, different picture. So, there's an old edge, the new edge, kind of give you an idea. Then, you got the completed sections on the high school roof. As I said, we have three phases we're gonna have to do, so this would be considered phase one. That's just some of the areas, but it's a very extensive area. Also, in phase one, we decided we were gonna add the hort roof. There's the tear-off of the hort roof, which was quite extensive.
The biggest of the three sections that were?
Uh, I don't want to say it's the biggest, I think they're all three, the way we broke it up, pretty equal.
Okay.
So, we'll talk about that here in a second, the next two phases. Couple pictures there. Now, this, these were, this installation was fastened down, correct me if I'm right, Al, because it's a metal, it's a metal deck underneath, so it's a little different than the high school, so you know, the fastening's a little bit different. That's what it looks like completed. Oh, with the trem key installed, tremply, I'm sorry. And that's the finished product. Now, at the same time, we've also been piecing and parting and trying to get the heating at the hort to stay working, uh, so we just, it, it was the best time and to go ahead and replace those units. We went ahead and placed the units at the hort also, so they have heat and air there at the hort building. Instead of having them go down, and then we gotta re-tear, and then luckily, we did that, because the other units were down a little lower, we had to build up a little bit, they were, they were down, embedded in that original roof. So, we had, it was easier that way, we would have a tear into the new roof, which is the last thing we didn't want, we did not want to do that.
How, how old's the hort building?
That, I do not know. I can find out what that is, but I don't know... I can find out what that is, but I don't know how old the hort building is. Center of the hort roof. See the units. So Al did a great job. He was I get to give him a lot of credit. I mean, we did meet with the company, you know, often. He met with them almost every day. Al gets here early. I want to say, no, he's probably, it's 5:00 AM, he's late. And he should be going home at a decent time. And if those workers stayed till six or seven o'clock, he stayed till six or seven o'clock. You know, so he, he did a nice job. The company was very respectful, well maintained. They actually gave a detailed report daily. It didn't matter if it was weather related or not, what they did, what they accomplished with pictures. So we have a very extensive report. If the board would ever like to take a look at that, that's, you know, that's, but that was from a daily report from start to finish. So we do have that. We're talking about this. So this is the high school. We talked about doing some masonry work in the courtyard. If you remember, we were getting water that was coming through in the courtyard, you know, coming into the science rooms and the other rooms from that. So we were able to pull out those bricks and get that masonry work done and take care of some of the wicking issues. So we're not getting in some of that moisture and then always having to scrape and paint and scrape and paint. It was, you know, around, completely around the edge. So that project was completed. You can see that some of the finished work. You can obviously tell where some of the new brick was and not. So we also paving, you know, I mean, we, we have a lot of paving going on. Even today, we still got a lot of paving going on. So for the high school paving project, you can kind of see the yellow was done last year. It was just, what we did was we filled, filled everything. They cleared it off and they, they skim coated everything that needed to be done to keep it fresh. In this case, this was gonna be the same for all the red. All was gonna be, you know, filled in and patched anything and then skim coated. And then obviously, if we needed to do mill it down and redo any areas small for this time, we wanted to get, you know, that was the goal, was to get everything else completed. And then as we make a plan with paving, we'll decide when we're gonna attack larger areas. But right now, it just hasn't been done, so we had to do that. We did run into the fact that we have a catch basin that was just shot, you know, by the BOAG. So we had to get that replaced. There's no reason for us to start milling and cleaning over some of the things at the high school and then have to dig it back up and spend more money. So while we were doing it, we went and put a, you know, a fresh catch basin in there in the driveway by the BOAG in the back to stop all the water that we were getting and it was pooling in there. So that's, that was added in there. And that's what it looks like complete. Washington, we did the seal coating there as we did at the high school. So you kind of get an idea there where we seal coated, above shot. We, and then obviously what it looks like when it's done. They redid the lines for us, seal coated, looks a lot better. Cleaned up a lot. Some of the, some of, we had some holes and things that needed taking care of, so it looks much better. Marlboro, I said, we had different cement projects, small cement projects. That's before and after there at the, at one of the doors. Kind of get that taken up, redone. That was just cracking. It was just not safe. Well, also at the front walk corner in Marlboro. Door eight at Marlboro, we just, it just struggled. I mean, it was just not good for our kids going in and out. It was pulling water there. So we had that, we had that taken care of. Get you an after picture there. Lexington, we had cement work done at Lexington. Before, during, there's, there's always water at Lexington, by the way. If you need water, you just go to Lexington, you'll find it. After. Bus garage cement works. We had, we had, we had issues at the bus garage, so we kind of got that, it was just not good. So we kind of got it chipped up during, broken up, got that out of there. And what it looks like after. And that's probably the entrance into the bus garage in there. It was just not good with the amount of buses. It hasn't been taken care of. Or not, it has been taken care of, it's just worn down the cement. It's just, it needed to be fixed. Washington, and we addressed this too. So the before is, that curb around there was just really deteriorating. We were just kind of kept patching, patching, patching. There's cracks in it, so so the, that's what, we just had that completely taken out and then redone in the front, right there at Washington. So it's yet to be painted yet, so we just wanted why that was all. Sump pump, obviously, you know, we, we knew that there was water down in the basement. As you go downstairs in the, in the Washington in the basement, you know, there's always a continuous small pool of water. Then if you had heavy rain, there was a lot. They said we had the sump pump put on, put in. That is a significantly dried that area.
Is there damage to those bricks? Is that, is that gonna be repaired from the water?
We have not, I mean, down there, when the drain alliance drain sewer was there, they just felt, let everything dry up and hold. There's not anything really bowing at this point in time. I mean, we'll keep an eye on it, but having the basin around the corner catching that and draining into that and pumping it out, it's significantly better this time. Still, as I said, remember, we had door replacements. So this is being, this is actually, these pictures were done. These, both these doors, I think, are now replaced. So these are already replaced as of today. So if you went to door eight at Marlboro, that's replaced. And then the Lexington's door, that one also needed to be replaced. So those are done. Middle school, as I said, more paving projects. If you've been by the middle school right now, you can see where they milled up extensive part of the middle school lot over there. Those should be started here, I think, next week. So I think Marlboro will be first. And then the middle school and then Lexington. So, you know, weather pending, but it looks, everything looks like it's right on track for us to, from there. So if you've been around the middle school, all the way around the back, they're also doing the walking tracks. We have that community walking track around the middle school. So one of the things we've worried about is there's been a lot of cracks and it's moved up and down based on the earth, how it is. And so I've had a lot of community members say, "Can we get this done?" So that's also gonna be done. So the, the track itself around is also gonna be ripped up and redone, you know, around that. Because it does get used often by the community. So still more of the middle school lot. You can see all the way back, they've milled all the way down. And our buses go through here every day. So we got a, the reason for the milling and not just a seal code is because it was just not gonna hold. You would've wasted money. You would've seal coated it, wasted. So at this point, we needed to, you just can't keep throwing a couple inches on it because then it's just not gonna, it's gonna raise it too much. So then some of the areas coming, like some of our walk paths into our doors also needed to come up. Others were okay. So we just kind of had to evaluate, you know, what really needed to be done versus what could just be sealed. As I said, we have some fencing. The soccer fence and the kindergarten fence will be done before school starts. The, the kindergarten fence was damaged in the windstorm. So we had a tree down, so that still has to be filled in. And that's, we're waiting for the fence to come in and get that pulled out. So that will be done before the school year starts. It's on his docket. And the soccer fence was always on there. It's been pretty, that was a grant that we got when I was at Washington from Lowe's. We got the original soccer fence over there. It kind of stops the kids and the balls from going onto the main road, or at least into the culvert or ditch. I mean, that also helps, so. Lexington, again, a lot of paving going on here. Okay, Lexington was probably our most, largest overall project because the entire parking lot had to be redone. Originally, that's what the board approved. As we got into it with Vasco and our meetings with Vasco, Al and I were meeting with Vasco, they basically said, you know, I was very adamant on, you know, A, we got a couple sink holes we need filled. We got extra milling, millings that we were able to put into the woods that take us down to the septic system that Lexington has. So we didn't have to worry about the overgrowth. We're able to get back there no problem. Josh reached out to me. He was at the Marlboro trustee meeting and there was, Marlboro trustees asked about
The road department.
The road department about the shaving. So we were able to share a lot of our millage with the Marlboro, uh, road department that they use over there. We use some for, where else, Al?
Septic.
Middle school. So there was holes behind the playground in front of Lexington that we used to fill those with. So it was kind of nice. Because a lot of times, they'll take it out and then just go dump it somewhere. But, you know, we were able to use, you know, most of that stuff or share within our community that way. If somebody's reached out. Yeah. So Lexington also, when we run into it to really get the water away, we, it was really suggested that we do a catch basin in the back. So we went ahead, I said, we went and did the change order for catch basin. So they did, you know, saw the picture of the catch basin that they did at the, in front of the high school BOAG. We put one of those there. Then just the other day, as they were getting to the front of Lexington, we also have a pool of water. They got in there and just water keeps coming up. They're like, "If you really want to do this right, you need to put another catch basin in. And then you're just not gonna worry about it." So we actually are putting in two catch basins at Lexington. So we're not having that water kind of flow back towards the building. So that's, that's an extra one.
Maybe that's where that water's coming from.
So, I don't know if there's a spring underneath that parking lot, but it's just, there's just a, it's a constant. So we do, you know, so that's, that project's gonna be finishing up here soon. So it's gonna look really nice when it's all said and done. That is, it looks, now Marlboro looks great. They milled it and got it all ready to go, but that is not paved yet. So Marlboro's next week, you know. We were, we were teasing Mrs. Moore today that that's how it is. You're done, you're good. So it's nice and smooth.
It's still better than it was.
Yeah. That's what it is. So that, that, that project will be completed next week also. So that's all ready to go there at Marlboro. So we, you know, we're, I want to say probably seventy percent through our paving projects. We're at the point now where what everybody likes to see, the final, you know, getting that done and then the, the parking lot put back together. All right, so as Nick alluded to, we have the safety grant that we use for phone systems, security cameras and PA systems in all our buildings. Ben, I'm gonna let you talk and I'll just click my fingers and, you know, you can talk a little bit more on this because Ben's been our project leader, uh, working with Nick and on that.
So we, we kind of decided based on what we have right now, the interior camera situations in all of our buildings is in pretty good shape, but we're lacking in the exterior coverage, especially at the elementary buildings and the middle school. So what we're doing is part of this project is adding those outside cameras. When we're done, we will have full visibility of the grounds of the high school, middle school, the horticulture grounds, the stadium, and all three of the elementary buildings. So we'll have full perimeter security visual on all of those. Also, as part of that, we had a fantastic group from Communications Consulting who installed their phone system, our new phone system a few years ago. They came in and in a single day programmed and placed 140 phones in all of our classrooms across the district. I think I parted ways with them in Washington at about 6:00 that evening. So those are all programmed and in place. Obviously, custodians have been in there cleaning and tear apart rooms since then, but everything's ready to go. Plug it back in and we're, we're up and running with telephones everywhere now.
Are those telephones just for intra-district communications or can they actually call outside?
They are able to call outside as well. Yep. One button access to call the office if there's something going on. Obviously, they can call from classroom to classroom, you know. Mrs. Smith needs somebody to come cover her room so she can go do whatever for a few minutes. You know, just the little things that you don't think about that it's gonna improve.
Teachers can call home when, you know, in their planning period if they choose or vice versa. If you really need to, have a student, you need to call home. You don't have to physically send them down to the office. Ways that you can actually do that right from the classroom.
Yep. Throughout this entire month, Calorino AV started on Monday. They are installing the new PA systems. Giving us a lot more capabilities than what we had with the old systems. I think those old propane systems were from the seventies. They worked most of the time, but they were just getting tired. The switches were not working all the time. You couldn't communicate with certain classrooms. So it was time for an upgrade. So this is upgrading the head end unit in the office for every building. Each building is gonna have a panel that looks similar to what's in the center there where they can initiate a one button lockdown, a weather event, an evacuation. And what happens is anybody in the building that hits that button in the office, it will initiate the sequence and play a recording on a loop through the entire notification system. That can also be triggered remotely through a telephone from people who are authorized to do that. So huge improvement to our emergency communications.
What happens when you inadvertently hit that? Is there weight on?
You would have to get on the PA real quick and say, "Uh, sorry." It does give you
There's no full
... before it starts playing the And, and they're, they're mounted in such a way that it's not in a situation where you're gonna accidentally hit it. The buttons are kind of recessed, so you know, it's, you need an intentional push
Got you.
To activate that. That's just another shot of the inside of one of the cabinets. They wrapped up actually Washington today with the install. Lexington's in progress. He's moved on to the middle school as well. So they're making good progress this week.
Are those units all in the main offices or?
Those are in the main offices, yeah. So the, one of the issues that we've run into is Marlboro is an example of this. They need to move the main office to a different location for security, for door entry and everything. We could not move that unit on the left without rewiring the entire building. So on that previous slide there, that cabinet is what goes where that PA system used to be. And then if you go forward again there then, on the right hand side is the replacement for that unit. And that can be placed pretty much anywhere in the building where we can get a cap file network cable to. And that gives them all the same functionality. They can call individual classrooms. They can do all building pages. We're setting up outdoor paging, the elementary buildings for the playground areas and the high school, middle school. It's gonna be full perimeter paging as well, which I think is gonna come in handy in some instances. But that will also be a one button access to do that as well.
The outdoor paging, paging's critical because we've been in a situation, thankfully, we haven't had to use it. But if, how do we let our kids at recess know if something's going on inside our building or they need to evacuate or stay outside or vice versa? So, you know, same with our high school, middle school grounds. How do we let people know between the mall and center here? So now, you know, probably tell you the PA system is now linked to the hort. We had nothing to the hort building. So now we got, the high school PA system is now linked to the hort. So the hort, we can just call up and the announcements will be in the hort building. If we wanted to page outside, we'll get our stadium. We'll get that all in the same scenario.
See you leaving the building.
Are these, are these systems interoperable between multiple buildings or just, just the hort?
So high, high school, go ahead.
Yeah, they are, they are connectable. So if we want to in the future, we can, we can initiate like a district wide lockdown, for example, from a central point on all the building units at once. for example, from a central point on all the building units at once.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben?
Thank you, Ben. Good stuff.
Are there alarms on the doors so that if somebody goes out?
No.
Or, or for us to know that a door is not secured?
Okay. So yeah, so all our doors, because they're fobbed. So Ben, or any of our administrators, including Ben, it's an alert. So it's either like a red or a green. So if we know all our doors are secured, it's green and they can just pull it right up on any of our computer screens. If it read, that, that means that either somebody's propped it open, it's wide open, and then somebody needs to go down and check that. And then obviously we have the availability to lock down anytime we want or open. So like, for example, for a board meeting night, you know, for the doors that most people park at, Ben just sets a.
Locked them all.
He just sets it to unlock at, you know, 5:30, you know, for a six o'clock board meeting. I have them all set to all the doors to unlock so people can come right in. You know, so that way it's, and then then automatically then locks up, you know, at night, you know, so he could leave and say, okay, we know we have things going on, but we know the custodians are done at nine or 9:30. If they did forget to lock, it's going to automatically lock up all our buildings.
And the monitors are all just in each office so that whatever secretary or principal is in the office can see what's going on around.
So it's designed that basically you can be at home and look up any of our cameras. All our administrators, based on their building, have the access to their building, not district wide. So our central office, Ben will have district wide access. I'll have district wide access. Nick would have district wide access. But administratively, you know, Meg Farrell has obviously the high school, Mr. Rills leading the middle school and so forth, you know?
Heavily encrypted.
I would say so. And, and really we've had cameras for some years now. It's just, we haven't been able to branch out into more coverage areas specifically outside. Where sometimes we're getting things happening in our district and we just have no cameras coverage to be able to go back and say, hey, we can pinpoint what it is or zoom in and see. So altogether, it's kind of a nutshell. I mean, this is, this is my 13th month, so I guess a year, we've done extensive amount of projects in a year. So I really appreciate the board bearing with us and allowing us to go ahead and move forward with that. I mean, if you really had to put up an estimated price tag with the safety grant, including our projects that we've done through either the permanent improvement fund or our capital improvement fund, probably in the last 12 months, we're probably looking at about $2.5 million. That's probably on a low side.
Are the buses included in any of this security stuff?
So interesting enough, in that $500,000 grant, we still, our high school, middle school, because they're a little bigger, we've, you, you basically, you had to do like a hundred thousand per building. And so we pretty much used up that money, but at our elementaries, we still have additional funds. So Nick's working with ODE right now to make sure, which we, we're, we need about 20 some cameras for our buses that are just outdated. So the hard drives aren't matching up with what it is. We can get that through the remainder of the money. So, but we have to prove that these buses are going to which elementary. So if we have an additional 20,000 left for Washington, then we got to know which buses are going to Washington and be able to tie that 20,000 to those buses and so forth down. Because everything has to tie to that specific building on how that is.
How long does that bus have to continue serving that elementary where the district could interchange it?
That's what we're finding out. We're making sure that we're, we're crossing, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, but as far as we got in conversations, it seems like we're going to be able to move forward with that. So that'll save us. So Sherry's pretty excited because we are getting, some of our cameras are getting pretty antiquated on our buses. So it's just going to make things a little nicer to get, be able to get those upgraded. Any questions about summer projects, where we're at?
Is all of this still looking like it's going to be completed before the beginning of the school year?
All this looks like 100% completion before the beginning of the school year. The ones, the ongoing project's going to be the finishing up the PA systems, the outdoor, some of the cameras. That's the safety grant stuff, which I didn't, you know, we knew that was an outlier with that, but the paving projects are staying on par, landscaping's on par. I know the, we didn't talk about the west wall at Marlboro, but that's all planned, ready to go. As soon as they're done paving, they'll be coming in and taking care of that wall. Based on the, on the list. So in front of you or in your folder, you would have had, it's funny. It says jobs completed, working on or estimated for. It just said, say, job's completed or will be completed. But I kind of went back, I was sitting with Al and I, and I, as I said, the next few months, I wanted him and I to come up with, I told you, like a, a pretty extensive preventative maintenance plan on what we have. And I don't want to go back to where I didn't start. I kind of just said, let's just start where I started because I, I can't get exact dates or know what done to a degree of what it is. So I, we, it's basically works also on 2023. Here's a list and I'm not talking, in this list that I gave you guys for the high school, middle school, Lexington, Washington, Marlboro, and then it goes back to last year, 2022. What we kind of talked about and done as a, you know, as a board that you guys felt that was, you know, critical and we talked about through our work sessions and that. These things are either completely done or will be. So I'll kind of update that and refresh you guys on this. And then this is why we're going to start a preventative maintenance plan in a sheet based on this. This does not preclude the fact of all the general maintenance, day-to-day things that happen. Those aren't in there. So as Al and Rayo replace multiple urinals throughout the district, that's not placed in here. The painting projects that are done on a consistent basis throughout the district are not in here. These are major, what I would care, major projects that need to be addressed. You know, we were talking about cleaning the carpets, washing the walls, changing every light, taking down ceiling tiles, filters. I mean, the, the list could go on and on. I did ask Rayo and Al about that and they laughed. And last year they gave me what they did for the summer and it was like 82 pages. And I was like, don't ever do that again. I mean, it was like what they did minute by minute, you know, and I said, I don't need that, you know, so we kind of got this squared down because we know our custodians and our maintenance staff worked very hard to, you know, to keep things maintained. But I think I need to keep the board informed about what these major projects are and then how we're going to continue to save ourselves, you know, maintain these certain things with that. So.
Are we getting any idea from the townships or what kind of potential disruption we have on the roads buzzing when school starts? Are we?
As of today, we have not gotten any update from the townships that they're going to have road disruptions. Now typically, I would say within the next week or two, we'll know better. You know, they usually are, they're real good about sending an email to Sherry in particular, because she's been there so long that even, even me and just saying, hey, you know, be careful, there's a road closure going to be coming or we're going to be working on that. And then we got to, you know, let the parents know on that route if we have to adjust the time. You know, with the routes prior to our open houses and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
So I did put that in your folder about jobs for at least the last 13 months, what we've done in the district to give you guys an idea.
Has, has anything been done to address the steel beams for the canopies outside of Lexington? Because I know that they had some of them that were almost completely corroded through at the base.
I don't, Al, I don't think we've addressed those yet, have we? I'll see if I can get you a little more information on that, but I don't think we did anything with that this summer, if that's what you're asking. I kind of stuck to what we had at hand.
Gets on there.
Well, we are, what we, what we did last year, which I really thought was good, we did another work session, probably, I think we did it around November. And we just kind of talked about what are the, the critical projects we want to look forward to in the next spring or summer. And obviously we need to talk about phase two, the roof. So right now we're in the process of, we will be in the process of starting to get quotes on phase two. So it looks like phase two would be the front of the high school there. There's a front high school, the backside over here over these classrooms and right over here. So pretty much it'll cover, we'll end up covering the rest of the high school with the exception of the auditorium and the gymnasium. That would be phase three. And the auditorium and gymnasium right now are not seeing any leakage. So I felt that, you know, we hit the main leakage point, which was where we're at right now and, and the main area first. And then our second area where we're seeing the most leaks is going to be that section is what we thought. And then we'll go ahead and hit the, we'll come in from where the custodians come in over here on the north side or south side. And we'd be able to get up on the auditorium and that without having to go over the new part of any roof.
Okay. And, and you spoke with me about, you know, the lack of AC in the auditorium and gymnasium. Is that something that we might look at?
Which is another reason why I want to wait one more year. Because I think when we do that, I'd like to get some units, I'd like to get some quotes. I'd like to know, you know, some different options, you know, is it, can we put two or three units on there to give us heat and AC in the auditorium and the gym separate? Do we need just one unit and baffle on each side? And then depending on what it is, is that a better option between the wall in there? I don't know. I don't have that answer. I'm not the expert. So, but I, I want to make sure, that's a 100% something I hope that we can accomplish. Because I think it needs it. Everywhere else is.
Yeah. You were saying that, that was the phase you were looking at doing last for the roof. So that way, you know, you're not, you know, putting the cart in front of the horse. Start over.
Okay. Then financially, I'm hoping, you know, as we move forward that that's something, because that would probably be a little bit more of an additional cost into that phase. We were talking about adding that. So.
Do we have any sense of what a project like that would be for?
No.
When Dr. Mike was here, he said it would cost more to do that than to build a whole new auditorium, but I don't know how he got that.
That, I think that is incorrect. You know, I.
Well, there's already an air handling system there that's inoperable, right?
Correct. So it just depends on the size of the unit, based on the square footage and what you want to do. Now I am not, I've been fully clear that I don't need my gymnasium or auditorium to be like a home or a classroom where you can set it at 69 degrees and that's what the temperature is going to be. But I also would think we do need to have heat and air in there. I think it's going to withstand some of the humidity, make things last a little longer.
I don't think there's ever been a problem with heat.
No, but the handlers, the handlers, the handlers will fall there.
Air conditioning.
Yeah, but we, we couldn't put the mini splits in there. So like right now, most, we have mini splits and all there. That's just, we wouldn't have enough. I think actually when I asked Plug Smart, what would it take to put mini splits in the auditorium? I think it was somewhere like 15 or 20.
Have to look at the.
20 of them? Yes. Just, you would just be like line them up after the wall if you're going to try to. So it's not worth that. So when you're talking about the gymnasium and high school, you're talking about the larger units like we put on the HORT building. Like, or the middle school, you know, something like that. So I know we've replaced the middle school once, you know, so I don't think that cost was more than replacing an auditorium by any stretch. So.
Well, if we're, if we're looking long-term, that high school, you know, this, this is going to be here for the next 20, 30, 40 years.
So that'll, that'll be part of preventive maintenance. That's why I wanted to hope to do that phase three last. So that'll be, we still have at least another well, two years, I guess, to maybe make sure we got the cost where we want it, what we want to do.
Is there a chance we'll see some pipeline funding to help with that?
That'd be nice, but we'll see.
So that's a no.
I, I don't know. We have no idea right now. So. Any other questions about that? Any other?
I'd, I'd just be curious is just a, if someone could just tell you, hey, it's going to, you're going to be between this number and that number.
I can do that. We're getting, I can give you an idea, at least on the AC side.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. I can give you that without even worrying about the roof itself. I could just have some people come in.
Because as people are asking during those sweltering basketball nights and plays, yeah, well, it's going to cost us much to do it.
Give me, give me a month here. So.
What's that?
Give us about a month. We'll get back to you. Not a problem. Good, good. Any other questions with summer projects?
It's pretty, pretty extensive. Like a lot, lot got done or getting done.
Yeah. Good work.
Very good.
All right. Speaking of summer projects, kind of give you, so obviously, as I said, we have two funds. We have our permanent improvement fund, our PI fund, and we have our capital projects fund. That's the O7O. So that's our, I guess you want to saw our pipeline fund. Because as our pipeline money comes in, obviously we, we transfer it out. So even though it comes in in our general fund, we immediately transfer it out. So this is our unencumbered balance. So we still have bills that we have to pay because we don't have projects 100% complete. So we're, you know, once they're completed and we've approved that their completion is done, then we go ahead and pay off the rest of our vendors. So basically we have a little over 1.2 million dollars there unencumbered. So that's, you know, what we have in there. And then in the capital projects fund or the O7O as I call it, we have about, you know, a little over half a million in there. So combined unencumbered right now, to date, we're at about 1.8 million dollars we, we have available for projects that would pop up, which is what I wanted. You know, we didn't drain any of our, our funds. So if we do have an emergency right now or something would happen, we're not going into general fund to have to attack it. We do have funds available to be able to still target. Obviously, we still will get a disbursement for permanent improvement. I think we've gotten a sum of ours this year already fiscal year. We'll, there should be more so that, that fund will continue to get a little larger. And then obviously with the O7O, the Nexus pipeline, we still have money that will come in, you know, this year because we have two payments, like we usually make two payments a year. So we make a payment in December and June each year for, until 2027 for our projects that we did at the elementary. Okay. So we basically each, every six months, if that's how you want to put it, we pay about $330,000 back to the bank. All right. So that's what it'll be in December and that's what it'll be in June. So December of '23 and June of '24. So there will be some more money coming in there. And then we'll have, I'm assuming, based on what we've just get in, even though Nexus is still tied up in court litigation, we still will have remaining funds to be able to have that discussion in the spring about projects. Questions on that? All right. Enrollment staffing, this, you know, so I can get on ODE's site. I can click on, give me the trend data. The boast it'll give me is five years. All right. So you can, that's, and that's the chart it gives me. All I did was screenshot it. I didn't make the chart. This is directly from ODE. So as you can see back in 1819, five years ago, our enrollment was 2084 students. 1920 was 2017. 2021, it dropped to 1906. 2122 to 1879. 2223, 1856. Now I think our, we're trending to level off about there. Okay. I don't see that going to be, it's not going to be like from 1920 to 2021, you see that drastic. I think where our trending is going to continue to trend about that number. But over that five-year span, that's a, that's a loss of 228 students. That is not abnormal. Okay. That's countywide, statewide. I mean, there are some outlier districts in the state that have of course increased enrollment, but for the most part, this is not because of something Marlington local schools did. This is just a trend. You, you're seeing everywhere.
What would, if you took open enrollment out of that, what would be the number? It's about 200 less?
All right. So. Go to a different screen here. I can't pull this one up because I'm on two different screens. So our end year enrollment, when they say 1856, they're talking about butts in seats. Those are the students that are sitting here. All right? But if somebody says, hey, what's your grand total enrollment for Marlington? I could say it's 2,110. That's, you know, but that's a stretch because we have open enrolled out. We have 182 kids open enrolled out. All right. Court placed out. Marlington kids, court placed out. We have 25. Tuition out. Students, their parents that just are paid tuition to go anywhere else, you know, that's, that's their right. We have eight. We have 11 students that just follow their, their staff out. They're just, they're, you know, they're students, they're just not here. We just have 10 kids that are, we just call them out. We just, they're just not, they're not going to be in Marlington. And then we have 10 that are special education out. So that, that all adds up. Okay? Now vice versa, open enrollment in, I don't have that exact number in front of me, but it's more than 182. I can tell you right now, we have more open enrollment in. But as you guys are aware, when they changed the funding formula and we went to the guarantee, it used to really benefit any district to bring in open enrollment because you're bringing in roughly about $6,000 a child. That no longer is the case. We're just getting a flat guaranteed rate. So open enrollment now is. enrollment now is still a necessity, but it's not a priority, so we want to maintain a level playing field, so say we lost twenty kids in open enrollment as a senior class, this is just a simple way to put it, you would hope as a kindergarten class, you're going to get twenty back, or, throughout the district itself, you're going to make sure that you have twenty back, you just want to keep that consistency, because adding additional open enrollment is not going to benefit Marlington, because we're not getting any additional money, you'd have to bring in twelve hundred open enrollment kids, and that's, or more, and that's just, that's, that's unrealistic and not going to happen.
Right.
Um, we've closed most of, we've closed some buildings, Lexington's been closed for open enrollment for two years, um, we have grade levels closed in multiple buildings right now, um, because of, um, our, how we educate, you know, some, some students we can't, we can't even educate, so we can't accept them in open enrollment, so I think this year, I would say, open enrollment wise, I could get you the exact number, but I can't imagine it's any more than twenty, twenty or twenty-two kids.
And just to clarify, that, that doesn't include open enrollment, does it?
Yeah, yes.
That doesn't line up with the numbers that, there was our enrollment in two thousand nineteen.
No, and, and you don't, I'd have to show you, it's through the secure data center, so, and that's through OD site, and that's part of the-
That's the EMIS, that's what you get, that's what they're getting-
A little bit, that's, that makes it very, it makes it very difficult, because I could, you could just Google Ohio Department of Education, like, uh, school-wide report card data, is what you could do, then you could click on Marlington Local, and then you could click and you'll get a set of numbers, and I could tell you exactly how many kids are sitting in our seats, and that might be off by ten kids, and you're like, why, and then you might get, you go to EMIS and you get a different answer, and really, it boils down to, you know, how things are entered, when they poll the numbers, when they don't poll the numbers, I can't give you an exact answer why, it's in every district.
But what you're, what you're saying here, though, is, that number there is, is, our funding's based on that number, right?
Our foundation, foundation money that we get from that, some of that, yes it is, so-
So that's, bottom line, that's the, that's the important number.
So which I find interesting, because I know, I have our June enrollment right here in front of me, so I have, this is what the secretaries submit, so I know this is a good count, I, and these are what we know, kids that are sitting in the seats, it's one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four kids, so this is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six kids, so, I'm counting eight more kids that I have than what's shown there.
Yeah, well, the only reason I asked is because those reports they were doing back in, well, this one, for example, in December two thousand nineteen, the total without open enrollment was two thousand thirty, and with open enrollment was two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, so that's, that's a three hundred difference.
Don't know, but this-
So that's why I'm saying, I'm assuming that's without open enrollment.
I, I would say that's with open enrollment, because I know that number's right spot-on within five or six kids of where we're really at.
Okay, is open enrollment hurting us financially, and if, if you're, if you're getting a flat rate and it's not covering the cost to educate the kids?
Because with us on the guarantee, if you remember when, when, uh, Forecast Five Ryan spoke, and I think at this point in time, we just got on the guarantee and Patty Maine was the treasurer, he made it very clear that Marlington can really not lose more than twen-, I don't know what his exact number was, but you guys were on the board, he said around twenty-some students, if you lose twenty, you're actually going to start losing money, and for you to gain money in the guarantee, you'd have to bring in that next year, which would have been like, a year ago, like, six hundred kids.
Yeah.
And then the next year, you'd have to bring in twelve hundred kids.
Yeah.
So, it's just, that's unrealistic, Marlington is not going to be bringing in six hundred kids, no school district in Stark County is going to be bringing in six hundred kids in a year, let alone twelve hundred kids or so forth, the growth potential's not there, the industry's not here, the housing developments aren't here, so, when you say open enrollment, is it hurting us? No, because we don't want to also lose twenty kids, I don't want to lose money on the funding guarantee either, um, if it got to the point where we got to the guarantee and we're not, open enrollment would hurt us, then we, that would be a discussion of saying, hey, do we just need to shut the doors, and just say, okay, we're only accepting, you know, residents for our own, and at this point, we're pretty close to that, I mean, we're not really, you know, taking in, you know, when we first started open enrollment, we're taking in, we're looking at a hundred, a hundred and fifty applications a year, now we may be looking at maybe fifty applications, but we're only taking in twenty. You know, and when you talk about, so I just, and I guess I'll go, when you're talking about enrollment and staffing, so we're talking about back to where we're at, losing two hundred and twenty-eight kids, so this is, you know, you can, this is accurate, I mean, I, I don't know what more I can say, when I talk about core teachers, I'm talking about your ELA, math, science, and social studies, so I kind of wanted to break it down to make a little more sense here, ultimately, my goal was, we have three elementaries, which is great, if you're K through five, and you have two classes at every grade level, that would give you thirty-six teachers, you know, so you got two kindergarten, two four, six, eight, ten, twelve, so you get, you know, you got twelve, twelve teachers, because that's where they go, they go into a homeroom or a base, we've been all over the place, so we've worked real hard on trying to minimize that, that's why we've kept Lexington closed and minimizing where we're going, because that's hard to do, because you really don't want to go any lower than that, because that means your enrollment's really decreasing significantly, so thirty-six teachers is ultimately where I thought we, where we should be as a perfect scenario, you don't want to go any lower than that, and you really don't want to go any higher, higher would be great, but that means our, our, we're growing as a, as a, as a residential area, the district would be growing, I got no issue there, so, that's where we got to this year, we were not there last year, so we were able to get there this year through some, you know, some attrition, so we were able to get to thirty-six teachers, so from a K-five, all three elementaries combined, we are at thirty-six teachers, we have seven hundred and eighty students currently K-five, so that's a ratio of one to twenty-two.
I've heard a lot of different numbers out there, why, why are there-
I'll get into that here in a second, because I just, it's just, you can, you can say different things, but I'm just going to kind of put it the way it makes sense in my mind, not saying that my mind makes sense to anybody, but let's just, I just walk through it that way. All right, so elementary's real easy to kind of do a ratio, because that does not include, uh, the PE teachers, that does not include the music teachers, because those teachers don't actually take a homeroom, they're not reducing class sizes for me.
Right.
Okay, they're not, you know, they're not going in and reducing that, if they leave one, a core teacher, they're going to music or gym, that core teacher has a planning period, all right, so you're really not reducing, so that's a pretty accurate, when you talk about, that is not even pretty accurate, that is accurate, you know, our ratio's one to twenty-two. Six eights, very similar, again, we have nineteen core classroom teachers, that's your English, language arts, your math, science, and social studies, we have four hundred and forty-eight kids in our high school, or our middle school, that's leaving us about a one to twenty-three student ratio. Again, you're not talking about your COACs, is what they call it in middle school, so we do have four COACs, but when they go to a COAC, they're actually leaving, they're not all together, so it's not like everybody's, it's not like the COAC and all, all core teachers are teaching at the same time, making that number smaller in a ratio aspect, and I don't have any concerns with one to twenty-two or one to twenty-three, I'm not saying that's a bad number, I'm just telling you, that's where we're at. Nine twelve is a little more difficult, okay, because you're, you're talking about a high school with a lot of moving parts, so you have your core teachers, and we don't have twenty, we have twenty-three core teachers in our high school, such as your English, language arts, math, science, social studies, somebody will say, if you do the math, six thirty-seven by twenty-three, that's not one to twenty-two, that's correct, that's why there's an asterisk, so let's talk, continue to talk about staffing, because we're, Mr. Swift had a comment, so, career tech at the high school has six, so if you have twenty-three core teachers plus the six career tech, you have twenty-nine, if that's how you want to put it, twenty-nine teachers, you do twenty-nine, by our enrollment of six thirty-seven, that gives us a ratio of one to twenty-two, you know, if I just did one to twenty-three, it would look like a ratio of like, one to twenty-seven, or one to twenty-nine, and that's, that's, that's inaccurate, we don't have a one to twenty-nine ratio, okay, so I gotta, you know, I had to, because when these students go into their classes, they could be in, like, if I gave the basic example, you could be a ninth grade, you have ninth graders in ELA, you could have a ninth graders in math, you could have them in science and social studies and in a, some type of career tech program, which is where you get that down, now, obviously we do have art, music, band, um, those things all come into play, so you see there, you back to the question of, well, you've heard people say that our ratio's one to thirteen, one to fourteen, you know, or I've had that in my meetings in the community last year, it was like, are we overstaffed, you know, and I'll talk about this at the end, but, what, what people look at, it depends on what data you pull from where and what year, you call, they, we call them FTEs, you know, full-time equivalents, or, some people will say, how many people do you pay as a certified staff member, because they're really all paid under a certified contract, but they're not core teachers, they're not reducing class size, so we have all these certified staff that all have contracts, but they're not reducing class size outside of career tech, so at the elementary level, three combined, we have ten intervention specialists combined at all our elementaries, and that includes our multi-disability units, our cross-categorical units, plus the, the students in there, so they're, what they're doing is, is they're basically entering in the classroom to support instruction, but they're not taking an entire class out, the middle school has seven, and the high school has seven. So yeah, so you talk about, yeah, we do pay a total of seventy-eight teachers, you know, core teachers, but then we also have all these additional contracts that we do pay, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a need, you know, special education, you know, is a need that is costly, but we have to have that, and we're, we're, we're almost as low as we can go in sped at, where we're at with those numbers. Tutors, we have six at the elementary overall, one at the middle school, one at the high school, now, our tutors currently are funded through federal money, so they're not funded, but they are on a contract, but they're funded through federal money and they're funded through ESAR, so, we have to take a good look at that this year as an admin team, when our, we're done, when ESAR money runs out, what are we choosing to keep on back on our payroll, or what are we going to let go, and we've been pretty good about not funding too many of things that, you know, we're going to have to continue on unless it's a need. Uh, fine arts, COAC specials, so those are your, your PE, your, you know, your music, your art, your gateway to technology, uh, your computer tech, you know, things like that, so you got five at the elementary total, um, you have five point five at the middle school and five at the high school. Career tech, as you can see there, we just have that at the high school, six, we only have one instructional coach, and she is also paid out of a federal grant, so she's not costing us anything, she come out of a federal grant. We have two school counselors at the elementary total, as they move, we have one at the middle school and two and a half at the high school. Principals, obviously, we have three at the elementary, one at the middle school, three at the high school, and I count Mr. Miller as a principal, because that's how he's paid, he's an athletic administrator, okay, so he does evaluate teachers, so I'm an administrator there. Uh, school psychs, obviously, we have one for the elementary, and then we have one for the middle school and high school, split. Speech paths, you, I gotta count how they, how they work, but we basically have two, a little over two, like, two point four, or something like that, and district technology on a certified contract, we have one person, and that's certified, so when you, I guess, and I didn't add this all up, but if you can, you want to take this, you know, go back a screen and take thirty-six, nineteen, twenty-three, which I think seventy-eight, and then go ahead and count our certified staff, that would give you ninety-nine percent of what we're pay, you know, how many, or not what we pay, but how many we have from a certified contract, and they say, how many certified people do you have on staff, so the question boils down, are you overstaffed and the certified? Um, at the elementary level, I am not, I'm at thirty-six, I don't, I don't want to go any lower, or go, or you're going to really raise class sizes, at the middle school? No, I'm at one to twenty-three, you know, is there wiggle room everywhere, if you want to make it, like I said, do you want to hurt the district, or do you want to injure, you know, if you want to injure the middle school, I could injure the middle school, I don't want to do that, high school? No, I think it's, we did that, we did last year. You know, intervention specialists, you just don't, it all isn't, depends on the need, you know, it, it really does, year to year, we've never gone a year, we don't have an intervention specialist either resign or leave, it's just the nature of the beast, and they're so hard to find, if, and that's why we cut many of those positions last year, we really couldn't afford to cut any this year, and we actually had to, um, offset some difference, like, teachers that have left, we had to bring back as intervention, because we had a higher special ed need this year, and that would, that is year to year. So, I just want to give you that idea of where we're at, I didn't do the whole numbers, but that, but then I go over here, so you asked about, next about staffing, now we have classified, so you're talking about a completely different group, all right, so, again, this is out of our, you know, we have pair professionals, you heard Nick talk about our pair professionals, we have seventeen, so at the elementary level, we have twelve spread out, three at the middle school, two at the high school. You know, why is it so heavy in the elementary? Well, A, we have a couple, multiple cross-categorical units at the elementary, specifically Lexington, so those are a little bit more heavily staffed with pair pro, we only have one at the middle school, one at the high school, and obviously, we do use our pairs at the elementary a little bit, uh, more readily for, um, support within the classroom, for some of our younger, more needy, uh, kids that have a, a specific need. Secretaries, three total at the elementary, two at the middle school, four at the high school. Clerical aides, we have three, so I don't want to confuse people, because they're in different categories, a secretary, full-time secretary works seven and a half hours or eight hours a day, so those are your head ones at the, at the elementary, your clerical aides really only work four hours to support the secretary in the elementaries, what they obviously do then and from there, our clerical aides go into the cafeteria and work as cafeteria monitors, and then they go outside and work as playground monitors, so you'll say, well, no, so-and-so's there all day, yes, but she's not a clerical aide all day, so that's where people get confused, they're like, oh, you got six secretaries at the elementary, two full-time, no, we don't. You know, these are, these are hourly positions. Custodians, we have six and a half at the elementary level, two and a half at the middle school, and five at the high school. And we are bare men's at custodians, and still looking, we still are short one, so even today that has re, uh, retired, it's not, we have not been able to replace yet. Full-time cooks, so these are your seven and a half hour cooks, we got four at the elementary level, three at the middle school, two at the high school. Part-time cooks, we got six, two, and four, so when I say a part-time cook, they're no more than three hours, we may have a four hour, so a lot of these people are our, uh, bus driver, so when you say, how many bus drivers do you have? Last year, we had twenty-seven bus drivers, or twenty-seven routes on the road, you know, when you hire a bus driver, they're full-time, when you consider you're hiring a full-time bus driver, it's four hours, you know, but, you know, they can, obviously, most of them live in our district, they're our community members, they look for other jobs that they can pick up, so this is where they step into roles such as three-hour cook or four-hour cook and so forth, so you got like, overlapping bodies, but they count as different FTEs, so it's all how you want to use the numbers, I'm just, librarians, we have one and a half at the elementary, one at the middle school, one at the high school, we had three tech assistants, like I said, we went down one at the elementary, so we have two tech assistants, we have none at the middle school and none at the high school. Family support specialist, we have one, and then one for the middle school and high school, they share, and then district technology, we have two. So it's from a classified side, and I'll say, out of that classified, certified, ninety-nine percent of those people- And I'll say out of that classified certified, ninety-nine percent of those people are paid through us, through general fund. When I say one percent isn't, our family support specialist is not paid. It's paid through it's paid through us, but it's contracted through the ESC. I think one of our SLPs, point eight of it is paid through the ESC because she's only here Tuesdays, Wednesdays for X amount of hours. So we do have that. So I think the question came up earlier from one of you about ESC costs. You know, do we get for what, you know, we pay the ESC to what we get? No, we they bill us. So I'll get there in a second. So I just, as you talked about, I mean, there was fourteen positions last year. If you remember, I said I didn't replace. And that gave us a cost. Eighteen positions were replaced, but they were somewhere over over the course of that eighteen. Some were more expensive, some were less, so it ended up saving us some money of that eighteen. That was a total. And I actually literally cut and pasted from last year's slide, brought that and put that right on there. Because guess what? I did not replace any of those fourteen positions. So nine positions were not replaced at a savings this year of that. Sixteen positions were replaced at a savings of two hundred forty-four thousand. But thirteen positions were replaced that cost us two hundred fifty-seven thousand. So when you do the math together, we we have a savings just this year on a, I guess, from an attrition or staffing of three hundred twenty-nine thousand. I kind of wanted to point that out because we do save when we do get to hire. Because what I didn't do, when I came on last summer, we lost, what I say, thirty-four, thirty-five positions. That all happened pretty much in the summer. It was just a mess. We didn't have a lot of turnover this summer. You know, it was one of my goals was to keep consistency and we've done a nice job. But what I wanted to be able to learn or grow from is like, how many positions do we replace over the year? So actually, I think it was thirty-nine. From August of last year to August today, we have thirty-nine changes in our district. So it could be as simple as a three-hour cook went to a four-hour cook. We had to replace the three-hour cook. A custodian passed away. We had to replace the custodian and so forth. So when I say sixteen positions are replaced at that, we actually had like thirty-nine people either say resign or retire or just something happened. So we replaced the bulk of those positions outside of nine. And the and to be exact, it was. I think it was only nine. It was only one certified position that we did not replace. And it was eight classified positions. So even though we had multiple retirements in the certified world, only one of those we did not replace. So out of those nine, eight of those were classified.
So between this year, last year and prior to you becoming super, we're close to one point nine million.
I I could only I'm only going to go with what I could calculate when I'm here, which is about one point six million, one point six three eight million to be exact. But yes, I know there was some savings from what Dr. Mike said that right before I came on. And I'm not disputing that at all. I just can't say with one hundred percent accuracy. I think he said it was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I'll send you a copy of the email with the breakdown of.
Perfect, because I don't have that. So I didn't want to put that in there and be wrong. I can only kind of draw conclusions based on my last thirteen months.
I thought it was around total of two million.
Well, don't, you know, as much as I was pleased, so and this goes back to the slides before. We've lost two hundred twenty-eight kids in the last five years. So if you take that and I saw I went back and said, well, how many of those were certified positions that either left because they retired or resigned? Or we had the one riff, you know, the one and only riff we had, did we not replace? So out of all these staffing adjustments, the last thirteen months, ten of those people were certified positions. So if you take two twenty-eight, you divide it by ten, that's a ratio of about one to twenty-two. So I guess when I when I'm going back to go back to this, those positions needed to not be replaced anyways because really we're right sizing where the district's enrollment has been going. You know, to keep those ten on, all you're doing is reducing your ratio down, but it's not a need. So some people say, well, why'd you do that? Because you need, well, your your enrollment doesn't dictate that you needed those. And that's kind of, this shows it. This kind of gives me data to say, you know what, those two hundred twenty-eight kids that I can't control that enrollment. But I can't say the ten certified that we lost, you know, does that way. Plus, we had all the classified that we still. There's another ten. There's another thirteen, I think. Thirteen classified that we have not replaced. That's just additional. Again, I would call it right sizing would be the best way to put it. You know, and if we continue to trend down, then we're going to have to continue to right size. That doesn't mean we're not deficit spending. We are. We're going to talk about that tonight. Even with the, you know, we go forward and say, you know, we we saved money. I'm gonna, you know, Bob and I are gonna, Bob will be chiming in here soon because we're getting to the Bob slides. It's, yes, it helps our district always, but we're still deficit spending. We're still going to have to talk about what we're going to do to move forward. So it's not like I'm painting a perfect rosy picture here and we're doing good things. We are doing good things as a board, but we're still got to, you know, be cautious. Any questions so far as I move on? I hope I'm not. All right. So back to, we talked about ESC. Question came up, you know, we're talking about the ESC. So I did not want to get into ESC does a lot more than this. I just wanted to know from last year, two years, two two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, what have we paid the ESC through contracted services? All right. So we do pay the ESC a contract, but that's I'm not, that's for PD, legal, things like that. That's not included in this. That's kind of covered. All right. But when you're talking about preschool, preschool is very expensive. I did a preschool analysis when I was special ed director probably four years ago. And I think in general, we got from the state about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for preschool, which the ESC gets. But the preschool itself costs us down to, if you count the benefits and the teachers and the services that the that we use is about four hundred twenty thousand dollars. I can't believe that. I would believe that number is much higher now. So let's just say, for example, preschool alone is four hundred twenty-five thousand, because I don't want to say if it's higher or lower. But I knew at that point in time, four years ago, it was. You still have occupational therapy, physical therapy, your psych support, speech language support, audiology, mental health support, home calling support, science and math, the SAM, gifted special education support, paraprofessional, English learner support, itinerant substitute services all come through, come be build back from the ESC, all our subs for the whole year. Because that's what we do. We see that's that's the system that the county is on and it works good. But family support services, your FSSs and behavior health. A lot of these things weren't even needs twenty years ago, which are all needs now. You know, so you see in fiscal year twenty-two, just in contracted services, we paid eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred five dollars and thirty-six cents to the ESC. Last year, we paid one point two million. Significant difference. Why is that? That number could go way down this year, could go way up. But I can tell you right now, our our special ed costs were higher this year. We had kids that we had to place out of district for. And you start placing kids out of district due to Mrs. Scrub glass. Do we have emotionally disturbed units? No, we don't have any units because we don't have a large enough population to hold a unit, let alone hire an eighty thousand dollar teacher with benefits. But we have just enough that we got to be able to bust out in various directions on various grade levels and then pay for that support. Please understand that every time we and we have no choice when you're talking about kids where you could be paying a hundred fifty to three hundred dollars a day for kids to be out of our district. You multiply that out. Those things add up. And the ESC is growing because school districts can't support. We don't, and most of these things, we just don't have enough of that population to be able to say, we should purchase or we should employ that. It would be more costly to us in the long run.
So preschool would cost us more if we did it in-house?
In the long run, it would. Yes.
Can we offer preschool because the hope is that they will come to Marlington?
No, they're Marlington students. It's just the preschool gives us a jump and a leg up on the curriculum. Gives us an idea of what's coming. You know, like we have that current waitlist. We've always had that waitlist. Don't get me wrong. We could add what we call an ECE room, which is just a a non-special ed room. You know, right now, we're we're a skip room. So we have a combination of classmates and tied in with students that have a specific learning disability, ranging anywhere from multiple handicap to just speech. Then we have a, but we do have a list of, like he said, twenty-four kids. That's enough to fill an ECE room. But we're going to purchase that EC room and follow state guidelines. So that's going to require another aide and another teacher. So you're probably looking at about a hundred fifty thousand dollars or more. And then you you have to, obviously, you charge for preschool. So right now, currently, the rate for preschool through the the ESC program, if you were not on a waiver based on income, is about a hundred and fifty a month. I guess if you do the math, a hundred and fifty a month times twenty-four kids doesn't come close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, let alone whatever costs. There's not. So it's, it would be great to have. And I think it's good for our students, but we're not in a position right now to add more rooms until we become a little bit better, financially solvent to be able to do that. But sad because we want to do it. Don't get me wrong. We'd love to do it. But I want to give you an idea. So yeah, we're not only are we paying our gen fund, but this is a is our figures of what we pay. But again, this is not including, the ESC does get more than that. We're not, you know, I asked them to separate out. You know, like we just pay the one bill, but this doesn't, you know, the services we get for legal advice, there's no, we don't get billed for that. That's just incorporated. There's no bill. You know, the PD that we get, when Mrs. Kaylee spoke about all the different things that we send our staff to the Stark County ESC through all those different programs. It's when you say, what does the ESC give you? That that's all part of it. That's built in. There's not an additional bill that we get because you went to the math meeting, the yellow meeting, the gifted meeting, the L, the testing coordinator, the curriculum directors, the superintendent meeting, and you go on and on. But we do get billed for what's up there because it's additional.
Do you estimate that's going to be close to the same number for this next fiscal year or the fiscal year we're in now?
That's why Nick left. No.
Or is that part of Bob's presentation?
No, it's it's really, there's no way, there's no, there's no way to know. I would say in between that, I don't see it going higher. Our enrollment's pretty, we're trending the same way. Our current special education numbers are fairly good to where we're at. We haven't got any thing that usually over the summer, if you get some enrollments or people coming in, we know that might be a student's disability may be too great where we have to add additional costs. It actually, I think, will go down a little bit because we were, we had some additional pair of professionals last year that we were contracting through the ESC for some of our kids that we no longer, I think we had three. And now we're down to one, maybe none, because we had a, we had one graduate, move on. And we have another one move to a different location that only needs one instead of two.
Does that, does that include the, didn't we have the French teacher we were contracting through the ESC last year?
No, the French teacher last year was a sub that we paid for. Yeah. So yes, that would have included the sub last year. Then you don't no longer correct. Yeah. But she was on a different rate. But yeah, that would include her too. And that's where it's hard. People say, hey, can you give me an exact contracted amount? If you ask me, and I would say no. Because OT, PT, phys occupational therapy, physical therapy, school psychs, those things are based on minutes served based on an IEP, based on when they show up. It's it's, there's no way. It's down. That's how precise it is. So we'll get a billing statement that's sixty pages long and then we have to highlight and see in question if it's fits into the IEP minutes and so forth. So when you talk about Margaret Wallace or Shelley Rams, or I mean, it's not just filing the paperwork and doing that. It's going through and looking and double checking in our house bill system where that is. So it's not as easy as saying, hey, this is how many employees you got and you pay a lot. I wish it was, but it's not. Any ESC questions? I just felt like if I didn't want to tell you something that isn't, I want to be very transparent that we do pay a significant amount of money to the ESC for contracted services. And that could go up and down in a year. If you would like a more like detailed back over how many years, we can get that for you. If I figure the last couple. I was actually pleasant shocked at the difference between last year and this year. You know, it's pretty significant.
No, I think this underlines again the complicated steps that are involved in in all parts of education. That is just if you're not involved, you don't realize and it can look a certain way and it just isn't that way.
It's very difficult when I say we're that the board is being very good stewards of their money that I can see in our discussion. But this is an outline factor you can't control. If we had just say the same average, let's just say we spent another eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand again on an average, that that's a, that's almost a four hundred thousand dollars savings into our general fund. All right, but it's not. So you know, those are things you don't anticipate. So if Patty Mayne a year ago says, you know what, I am going to do on the purchase service side, contract side, I'm going to pretty much budget what we did the year before, which is what you a treasurer normally will do, give or take ten percent. She budgeted maybe eight hundred fifty thousand, maybe nine hundred thousand dollars, then we get a bill at the end of the year to close out. It's one point two million. So we were off by three hundred thousand dollars. That's significant and that. So you could have a forecast that says this and then turn around and close out the year and you're off, which we're going to talk about tonight because not everything's rosy. We were off. And part of it was because of these reasons right here. All right. So I just, you know, the more transparency I can get, if you have questions, we can talk through that. It makes more sense. Any questions thus far? We doing all right?
Yeah, covered that pretty well. And just to kind of recap that a little too. I know from the treasurer's perspective, we've begun with purchase orders in place for about the same amount of expense, anticipating that from the ESC. You know, a lot of these things Nick Evanich is involved with and a couple of things he's already kind of straightened me out with, if you will, like OTPT, just with one student change he was aware of. He's like, oh, you're going to need probably another forty thousand dollars there. With MDED tuition, he's like, I think that went down about eighteen thousand based on what he knew. But he's thinking specific kids, specific kids that he's aware of, you know. So it it really does vary. I remember even just after I started, there were some things that changed after the beginning of the year that affected those costs because of a student that needed their IEP changed or they had to be taken care of here because wherever wasn't working. So it varies a lot and it's a lot of money involved, obviously. The next part of the presentation here is really going to be a recap of the forecast or basically to say, how did we finish the year out? This slide here doesn't need much attention at all, really. Our revenue was about, thanks for turning around. Our revenue was within point one eight percent of what was projected at the end of June, which of course is very close. Couple of reasons for that was, I think, if you remember, I know I presented it at a board meeting previously. We had TIF revenue in the forecast to a hundred twenty-nine thousand and working with Ryan at Forecast Five. That was one of his questions. Do you want to keep this in here? Because it was, we're working on the May forecast. And it was sort of a fifty-fifty. I really didn't know which way it would go. We did not receive that money. And even since then, there's more questions about the TIF and when to expect that. So more research is is necessary. But that's one of the significant variances in revenue. However, that was offset by investment income, which was much higher than forecasted. So we ended up being very close overall in.
Just tell me when.
In revenue. Go ahead. Here's just a indication too, as you're all aware of, you know, inflation's taking place in interest rates. and interest rates are, are going up a bit as well too. But here's where that, how that investment income looked the last three years. So obviously this last year was a lot, was very helpful to us and it still looks, uh, pretty good right now.
And just so you know, Bob's kind of talking, you know, with the May forecast, that's the, the, the one that's most, be the most accurate. Your November's a pretty good educated guess. Your May is the one that the OD really looked at. For the most part, what we try to get to is you, when you close out the year a month later, so you, he closes June 30th. Ultimately, you would hope that your June 30th closing matches pretty close to your May forecast. There's no perfect science to that, but that's what you want. So this is why, and why Bob's and I kind of got into the weeds here on this next few slides to try to explain the variances here because it's, it's, we did not, we were off. But that way, we were, we were off.
Yeah, and I hope I can explain it all clearly, at least what we were able to figure out from these changes. Just because some of them are just a little unusual, you'll, you'll see. But total expenditures, we were estimating just over 23 million for the year. We ended at 23,500,960. So 428,937 dollars worse than we expected. In percentage terms, that's only about a 1.8% difference, but really that's pretty significant from the May forecast. I mean, when you put together a May forecast, you're really, by the time we had that done, you probably really only have eight, eight weeks, nine weeks more to go in the fiscal year. So a little more variance than I had hoped for, uh, but as far as a percentage goes, less than 2%. Next slide, please. Okay, this will, this is, you know, salaries and benefits, of course, they make up over 80% of our financial situation. So in a lot of ways, this is our most important slide as far as explaining what happened that we could infer. One of the things that happened, um, if you look salaries, 274,000 dollar variance. Certified salaries, so those, those ones Dan mentioned earlier, of course, teachers and, uh, those other certified support people, 130,000 dollars roughly higher than anticipated. Now, you know, a lot of the story that's behind explaining where we are as a district financially is composed of ins and outs. 130,000 higher than anticipated, but yet 286,000 dollars lower than the previous year. So you have like those reductions that were made for the school year coming into play. You also have this variance then, this negative variance going the other way where the salaries we were expect, uh, were projecting, they came in higher than what was projected. So the interesting thing about this is that where that really is located was our IDEA B grant was completely used up for the year, uh, by the end of April. So we had to charge May and June certified salaries to the general fund. And so in short, I don't think there was enough budgeted in the general fund for those wages that way. It could be one of those things too, just with timing, that when the estimate was made, maybe larger IDEA B funds were estimated. I'm not sure.
So let me speak on that because this would be pre-Bob. All right, so you know, this.
That's what I was going to say.
So this, this, this budget for this fiscal year that we closed, budget was made by Patty May. And there's nothing wrong with the budget that Patty May made. It's just that in the education world, when it comes to federal grants, you're talking about our title money, the federal grant for the IDEA money, you're talking about Title III, your migrant money, different things like that. All this comes out right around June 3rd or 4th. Ohio Department of Education or the auditor gives you 20, it gives you till June 30th to allocate that money in the middle of summer. So you have a small window to basically determine where, where and how you're going to spend the money and explain it, or you lose it. So in general, we're, we keep things very simple in Marlington. You know, you could get in the weeds with IDEA money, but really we just pay salaries because as soon as you start getting into how you pay this material and this, the auditor starts getting into it. So it's, the auditor always says, it's just easier, you know, take his, take salaries out of it with, for intervention specialists. I don't think it anticipated, Patty being new, you know, typically in the past, they would sit down with me and you'd go through and you'd look at the staffing into that. So, and that changes, that number up until this year has continued to go down. And I'm not sure they took staffing out of it and put them back into the gen fund. So, and I'm, that's exactly what happens. But at the end of the day, we've kept our staffing levels the same. Our IDEA B money has gone down from the go, from the grant side and we didn't, neither, nobody caught it until we closed out the year and we were like, where did we have, why were we off? That won't happen this year, but. So. Did I say that right?
Thanks for that vote of confidence, Dan. Item number two there is sub costs were $65,000 higher than anticipated. You know, that much more compared to the last two months of the prior year. So imagine the forecast is projecting whatever it, it may for sub costs. Well, they were a lot higher than the previous year for whatever reason. The couple pieces that I know could have contributed to that is that I'm aware of a couple, well, probably more than like three or four. FMLA leaves, we have a couple other people that had long-term disabilities. One was approved for, uh, retirement disability. So we had some staff that we had to bring in subs for to cover, presumably beyond what was anticipated in the forecast. Classified salaries were about 20,000 higher in June than anticipated. I think it was the last one or two board meetings, we made some changes to some salary schedules there as well. And it's not listed up here, but I also made some corrections to some salaries, um, that, um, for some longevity issues that I had to deal with. Cause that's, that's really where I've been at as far as the last six, eight weeks is looking at salaries. We're almost done with that process here. Teacher salaries have to be confirmed here and begin with their new contracts in September, beginning of September.
Bob and I have spent these last seven months with the treasurer's office, going through, I think, every single paid employee's salary, where, what they were bored hired as, where they should be and making sure they're accurate is really what we've been done. And we have found many inaccuracies both ways. Some that we've overpaid and we've had to recoup, others where we've underpaid and we have to fix. It's just the right thing to do. So we've kind of been, that's been a big, a big bulk of making sure things are right because we moved to the new system that he talked about, strategic solutions. And we were under a system that worked great with Mrs. Yost, but that was a paper system and a lot of it was mathematically calculated every year because that's how you had to do it. You know, when you have somebody with more Yost experience that's been doing it for 30 years, she had so much of it up here, none of it was down here. So we get, you know, we get a, go to a new computer system with a new payroll clerk. You have to make those adjustments because the system has to make the adjustments on how we do it. So it's been a.
Yeah, and the new software is different than what we had before. You know, not to get too into the weeds, but the, that old archaic system, you had the salary schedules loaded in the system. So if a teacher, let's say was on step one, column three, it would look at the schedule that you loaded to figure out their salary. This new, and you'd think it would just be an enhancement of that. It doesn't use that kind of process anymore. You essentially have to put in like their salary and then it will, and the number of days and it will calculate the rest. So in a way, it, it takes away the meaning of what step a person's on or what salary schedule they're on, because the system's no longer using that to calculate it. You have to do that separately. And so right now, Lisa Manos and I are working to make sure that, um, if you will, my master spreadsheet of this is correct. And the information in the, the new software, the new payroll system also reflects that data so that going into the next year, we'll know for sure this person is on this step here, their salary is correct. And so we're just doing all we can to make sure that, that it's correct and that the system's updated to make better consistency in the future.
And we've taken into consideration the new minimum salary requirement.
We were already there.
Okay.
Yes.
I know we talked about it and you were going to be checking on it.
Yeah, we were, we're, we're good there.
Okay.
I mean, if you go back to this previous slide, we talked about that 400,000 difference at the end. The 130,000 is a, is a livable and probably a very normal thing. Varies from most May forecast to close out, if you're around 100, 150,000 difference, plus or minus, you're, you've done a pretty accurate job on that end in the forecasting. It's not Bob, it's just, he wasn't, didn't make that budget. So he got through the stat portion of it, but this is the main reason why.
Yeah.
Was there, was there one thing in purchase services, Bob? In particular, price of gas, food? Was there one thing in particular that caused this or was this all small stuff that added up over the course of the year?
In a way, neither, let me, you almost have to put that question into groups. The year was unusual in that we had a large increase in like electricity and diesel fuel costs. Those two things, well, that's not a purchase service, but the electricity is. But either way, we had a couple of things like that that were truly just a lot more expensive than the previous year. But by the time the May forecast came around that we developed that, we knew that. We knew the impact of that. So these variants, this variance here, 312,000 dollars in purchase services. One thing, these, these two items there that's listed, those are object codes. They break down the cost into different groups. Instructional improvement, 165,000 dollars more than expected. Professional and technical services, that's your ESC purchase services that Dan was highlighting earlier. Those were probably about 120,000 dollars higher too. What I suspect, and it's hard to prove in a way, because you'd have to go back and look at what was carried over from 2001 into 2002, for example, or from 2002 to 2003. But we pushed really hard in May and June in the treasurer's office with accounts payable to try to get caught up with our bills. We had a lot of ESC bills in particular that had some unanswered questions as far as the supporting document and stuff and, and where they should be charged. It's kind of the nature of the beast with some of that. I think that a lot of this purchase services here is probably due to that, that we got caught up on our ESC invoices, whereas a couple of those invoices would have, it would have been easy to not have taken care of those in June and paid them in this fiscal year, would have made for less variance in FY 23. If that's the case, then some of this will help us in '24 here just by being caught up.
So that's, therein lies the conversation. You can, I don't want to, you want to play the game, is what, like Bob says, no, we just, we need to pay our bills. You know, so this was the, what you do, you pay the bills, this is what it is, and then we start fresh and we know exactly where we're at. Or we could have pushed off 200,000 into the next year's fiscal budget, balanced it out and does, you know, kind of put it in there and embedded it and gone a different route. And that's not what he wanted to do. He just said, let's just get caught up, let's clear the books and know exactly where we're at. So we're not back in it, so. So you see that difference in the ESC? Like I said, if we would have stayed around 860,000, we wouldn't have this variance where we're at. And I don't anticipate that next year at all.
Okay, here's some of the smaller variances. Supplies, of course, isn't a big player as far as overall district finances, as is capital outlay, at least in the general fund. Supplies, 5.24% variance there. I didn't invest the time for this meeting to really dig into that, to say why, but um, it's, it's the right trend in the sense that we spent less overall. Capital outlay, that's also a positive variance there too. Just ignore the percentage, 82%. The issue was we had a bus in the forecast to be paid out of the general fund. That didn't materialize. Debt service and other, uh, not a big variance there, but that kind of ties every, ties out the total variances there.
But that is what you want to see as a board, those particular ones, at least staying consistent or trending based on where we're going at budgeting wise.
Yeah. Okay, this slide here, I'll preemptively say that it's, it takes some explaining, uh, but it actually tells a neat story once you, once you figure out what's going on. Over on the left there, the, the video's cut off a little bit, but that's basically each of our forecasts for the last, um, couple of years. You know, the words are cut off, but it's like September, May, September, February, we had a revised one, May, September, so on. So historically, those are our forecasts. Where this chart is use, useful is if you look at the, the green, I think it's the green part there, projected balances. But take a year like, like 2023. You could look back and say, all right, two, two and a half years ago, we were projecting a negative balance in FY 23 of $3 million. Changes were made, I'm not sure what, or revenue changed, that the next forecast, six months later, that was reduced to 704,000 dollars. And the following fiscal year, the forecast came out, positive number. It's getting more positive, it's getting more positive. As we got closer to actually getting into 2023, you see the, um, deficit there turning into a positive. This is our cash balance. So in short, what, I'm going to just take a microphone here, I'm not sure if this will work well, but just so you can follow. Like, like, so what this tells me as I look at numbers is, um, here's like what we're projecting for next year. Most recent forecast was projecting 7.1 million dollars. 6.8 forecast before that, only that much, 2.2 before that. So when you see a number going from like 3.7 million dollar projected deficit to 1.6 million dollar projected deficit, those are essentially the results of what you're seeing of the reductions that were made, like in staffing in previous years. Look here, there's a big jump too. Well, that's when, that's right after the significant reductions were made prior to FY 23. We see the, the result of that coming forward. So in short, another way to look at this is that if you have a bunch of red here, it's, as we get closer to it, where it's being taken care of so that we end up in a positive. You look farther out and just with inflation and other things, you see that that's typical. We have inflation taking place and it's turning red as you get in the out years. So, so in a way, it shows that we're making strides in taking care of that. But on the other hand, it shows that we always are being affected by inflation and it's turning into deficits and so we need to dig deeper as far as reductions go.
Part of that savings also was COVID money. Okay, we would not be.
True.
In some of those, the, the COVID years is the reason why we were able to stay more balanced than we were. It was not strictly attrition or, as I said, right sizing that year, because even previous to that, we got COVID money in. We would, we would be in a much dire strait without it. There's no secret, without that money from the government, we'd be that way. And I think prior to COVID, if you went back beyond that, there was another influx at one point in time of wellness or something that came in that always seemed, and none of that's forecasted in the future. I think what, the nice thing about what Bob did here was you go back so many years and forecast, our cash balance really, if you, once you get to the actual time, not forecasted out, you're getting, we're staying, we're at 9 million, we're staying around 7 million. We, I said, we stayed around 7, 8 million for a few years. You know, it's going to be hard to get that to grow because of inflation, no matter what you do. There's only so much right sizing you can do based on enrollment, based on what you have, um, without really, you're just destroying the district as a whole. And I, and this, he's, we're just trying to show the district as a whole, over the last 20 years, has done a pretty good job of, you know. You know, we've been lucky from the standpoint of being able to make some cuts here and there. At the same time, we've gotten money from other places that's been able to help us. We've got grant money, COVID money, I mean, we're working through the process, you know, in every avenue.
Yeah, you really, you know, just keep in mind that this is the cash balance, projected cash balances you see here, or actual cash balances at year end. So it really is important to keep in mind that that's the net result of all the changes in revenue also, as well as those changes in expenses.
Here's the sum up for you here.
Yeah, I wanted to, what I was trying to do with a couple of these, this slide, and I think the next one is give you a sense, kind of the big picture. How's this, what's this really mean to us right now? I prefer working with kind of calculated numbers, if you will, but I thought it would help paint, paint the picture if I sort of estimated a couple of things here. So we'll start with the official May forecast. That's the, our official document that was passed by the board. That projects deficit spending for this school year, seven hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred fifty four dollars. However, thinking that I know that those idea B funds weren't enough this year, we had to spend that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund for special ed. I'm thinking, okay, let's add that to that deficit. In other words, I bet that same assumption is, is there for FY twenty four, the forecast currently. So let's look at it like we need to add another one hundred and thirty thousand dollars into that FY twenty four forecast if we want to get a rough sense of where we're at.
And that, the reason why we, that's the way to do it, and you're saying, well, you were four hundred thousand dollars off closing, why wouldn't that be added to seven twenty five? Is if we go back to the slides, we're saving through, through attrition this year, three hundred and some thousand dollars, which is really that purchase service side.
Yeah.
So even though I was very happy, we were able to continue to save money through some staffing, once we closed out the year, that's, that money was absorbed in and it just came part of it. So it just, you know, it's not changing your seven twenty five forecasted amount.
Yeah, so really, go back to that slide just a moment, Dan. That part in the middle, that rough estimate, eight hundred and fifty five thousand dollar deficit spending. Now granted, we're going to be working on the new five-year forecast, that's to do at the end of November. That's when we'll get into the, the weeds and do serious calculations and look at those grant amounts, make sure how it's going to play out. That'll be our official estimate. But, but if today, this is, this is our best guess, that where we have deficit spending projected right now, roughly eight hundred and fifty five thousand dollars for this year. That means that any cash balances we have at the end of the year, we're depleting those by eight hundred and fifty five thousand if it goes according to plan. So that's obviously not a trend we could have continue on where our expenditures are outpacing our revenue by eight hundred and fifty five thousand. So that's the, that's the point of that, that slide there.
So like Kathy, when you ask, hey, are we talking about making our career tech program a little bigger? We were, but we're, we are always looking at options, but we currently are not. And it's, you know, it's not because we don't want to look at a specific need, it's just until we, it's, again, it boils down to, to add, to add a program, there's grants out there to add programs or get equipment or supporters to do that. But it's the staffing piece that costs you. You know, it's that, that staffing piece. So I, I'm just not comfortable making a recommendation to the board to say, let's, even though it's maybe a need and a want that meets our community needs, our industry needs, or what maybe some of our business leaders say, hey, can you, you know, I met with those business leaders, they wanted a maintenance tech program, they wanted more HVAC or plumbing or electrical or a combination of those. We can grant that out and maybe find that and we have space, but then you still got to find the staff person to do it. And in all honesty, once you, we, as I showed last year, I think an average medium staff with benefits is almost ninety thousand dollars. So it's, we got to be careful there. So that's why I'm, yes, I think we'll get there. But we haven't had new money into our general fund in over twenty years. So I think things have just started to, inflations and we're now having more grant money. We, we're going to have to continue to be very cautious, at the same time, have some other discussions.
Similar to that other slide about cash, this shows that deficit spending historically through the forecast. And I know the years got cut off in that far left column there a little, but it's the same story. You go back farther and you can see what we were projecting, like in the oldest forecast there, we were projecting four point five million deficit spending by FY twenty four with all the changes that have occurred with revenue, with expenditure reductions, et cetera. The current forecast is projecting seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars deficit spending. We finished the year, FY twenty three, this year, we just finished in June. We spent five hundred and seventy six thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifteen more dollars than we brought in from the general fund. But you can see, if you look at that May forecast, going across the bottom, you have the items in blue. Those are the actuals from the previous years. But you can see seven hundred and twenty five thousand in FY twenty four. The year after, two point one million. That kind of deficit spending, you couldn't survive for too long spending that much more. So we'll be watching that. The, the deficit spending number, which is one of the key numbers on the forecast, is really the place to put our attention as far as our planning goes from a financial standpoint. That's the living within your means line.
I, I asked Bob to make this slide.
Yeah, I even talked to Dan casually about this. I'm like, I think we need to tell this story, although it's going to need some disclaimers ahead of it, because it's really, has those things in there that are a bit of a guess, more so than usual in the sense like the one hundred and thirty thousand grant charged to general fund. Well, I explained why we'd add that back in to get a sense of what our true deficit spending is. But then, I say, all right, if that's where we're estimating right now, before we've worked on the November forecast and done all the detail work that I'm looking forward to doing, say, what if those reductions had not been made in the last couple of years? Those ones at the end in the summer of two thousand twenty two, for example. If you look at those, that one million seventy seven thousand dollar number in the blue there, fourteen positions eliminated before the two thousand twenty three school year. They're replaced with lower also. If you added those back into the deficit spending we have, you would see that this current year, we'd be operating at two point five million dollar deficit. So that would just not be sustainable for long, obviously. So in spite of some of this having that hypothetical, rough guess aspect, especially in the earlier part there, I wanted to give some kind of sense of what has been done too, because in working with districts before coming to Marlington too, it always seemed like one of the problems that school districts have is this idea of the revenue in, the expenses out. You'll hear districts say, well, we made reductions, but people will look and say, but you're spending more this year than last. So you know, you're, you know, tell us what you really did. The point is, you do those things, but inflation carries on. And so you kind of lose the story of what you've done. And so I always would encourage districts to keep good records about what you have done so that you can tell people, here is what we did and try to quantify that. So, so not as detailed as working through that November forecast, we'll get there soon enough. But I wanted to give you a sense of, in rough terms, here's what it would look like had those reductions not been made. Do you, I think we're going to get into a couple of other things here, but did you have any questions about any of the financial information we just went over? Okay. Very good.
All right, as we get closer here to wrapping up, I just, we were talking about a little bit about two thousand twenty three, twenty four continued. You know, I still, we're still going to drive climate and culture for our district. Climate and culture is going to drive our instruction, it's going to drive how we're going, our kids are going to perform, it's going to drive how people view our district. It just, it drives, I can't think of anything it doesn't drive. So we're going to continue to celebrate our individual building successes, district achievements. I'm going to continue, as with the district, to communicate our vision and mission, a mission. We're going to continue to embrace what we consider our rituals and traditions of Marlington local schools, because that's vital, that we continue to embrace what we believe in. We need to continue to encourage collaboration, communication and innovation with our staff. Continue to put our expectations high for our students and give them the tools to support those needs. And we got to continue, as we talked about, shared leadership. Okay, and it's, it's moving that way. So it's good, we're not, and I just, that's why I put continued, because I've talked about this a year ago and I don't need to change the thought. Talk about moving forward. Okay, so we're talking about this year. Got a lot going on this year again, in my mind. Again, he says hype, I could have put hypothetical moving forward, because that's why we have a work session. We'll probably have multiple more work sessions. But our strategic plan is up, all right? So it ends at the end of this year. So I've been through three strategic plans here that I've been part of. I came in on one with Tony Scott. I did one with Jim Nicodemo, I've done two with Joe Knoll. So it ends in two thousand twenty four, so we're going to be as an admin team, talking about the strategic plan. That's going to take some time, because we, you know, we're, we're looking at our mission and our vision, we're looking at how we engage the community. We, we need their input. We're talking about facilities, communication, culture, finances. So all those things have to come into play, we have to draw goals and put that together. So my goal is by the end of the year, to be able to present to the board what our strategic plan is for the district, including your input, so you guys would sign off on that and what that is. Strategic plans look different superintendent to superintendent, so this is my first one, so I'm kind of just going to figure it out. We have had used, I can honestly say, we used the impact group for the last two strategic plans with Mr. Knoll. Of course, I don't employ the impact group anymore, or the district does not. And I, their cost is very high to do this, tens of thousands of dollars. So we're going to do this on the zero cost strategic plan. All right, so I'm working through that right now, how that's going to look, because it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of work that goes into that. So that's coming. Community meetings. So take this PowerPoint, slim it down. Not nicks or renays, but Bob and I are going to go on a little road trip and we're going to hit the three townships and we just want to kind of give them an update. So I think it's important that Washington Marble and Lexington Township do hear from us and do kind of see the same thing we kind of presented today, including the projects, you know, that they know, so do that. And then if they have any questions. I'll probably hit some other community groups too, and I'll continue through community meetings and maybe have some of this in that discussion piece, but a not, a little bit shortened version. And to that, we won't go into too much detail maybe unless it needs to be or those questions arise. But again, back to just, I don't think the communities can come in and say, hey, we're going to have a state of the schools called that. And we could have said, this is a state of the schools. I, I'm not sure how many people would have came. So we need to get out there. Uh, we're going to be doing some work sessions on major district projects. We talked about what we're going to do for twenty three, twenty four. Obviously, we want to talk about phase two, the high school roof. We have more paving needs that need to be addressed. Okay, we're getting close. I think we'll be able to finalize most of our paving needs. You know, what I didn't put in the summer projects was, you know, we had the soccer, again, we had that all re, uh, milled, or not milled, but filled in with slat, uh, slates or slat to get that kind of nice and smooth again. So we have some discussion to talk about and what it would be to fix that. Like I said, I think as we get there, we're not going to have as many needs, because we're just going to be able to maintain it through our, you know, plan. So that's coming up. And finally, you know, we are going to have to have maybe hypothetically, a levy discussion. You know, I mean, is it, do we need operating money? Do we need PI money? All right, because we are, I, I think we right sized, in my opinion, right about where we need to be. Give or take a few staff here or there, depending on our enrollment. Where I feel that the district can still continue to move forward in a positive manner and may, and give, give good quality education. At the same time, we know that we haven't had new money in twenty years, we have inflation. At the same time, I'm smart enough to know this district in my eighteen, nineteen years, that you need to be careful with what you ask for. And I've made it very clear that, and the, the, the communities made it clear, you know, the last levy that was asked for was, to me, significantly large. And there were zero cuts or thought put behind that before they did it, or it was communicated incorrectly. I have an opinion that I think we do need new money. I do think there is a number behind it, but you can't give a number until you have a, a, a clear November five-year forecast, because that's when that discussion happens. If we are in the same position we're in in November, if it says, yes, we're forecasting the deficit spend seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, then, well, you know, that'll give me an idea what that levy would be. But I think from a district standpoint, and I've talked to the townships, I've made this clear, if we ever went at new money, I think, you know, in my opinion, and again, the board makes the final decision on that in collaboration with the treasurer and the auditor and so forth. You know, we, we just got to live within our means, so the, an, an operating levy would not be to add things back to our district. It would be to make sure we stay within our means and enrollment. At the same time, I would say, I always put, it's very similar to maybe what a township would ask for, for a road levy, a fire levy or so forth. Because if you look at our forecast in two thousand twenty seven, we're, we're paying off all our debt. We're going to have a different influx of money and the board here is going to have some options. On the other end of it, and Bob and I have talked about this, you can go with no operating money. We're currently taking our pipeline money and immediately it's coming into the general fund and we're pumping it right back out into, to deal with capital improvements or buildings or maintenance. You could just let that pipeline money stay in the general fund. Then we won't ask for any operating money, but we still need to work on our buildings. So maybe we need to discuss doing a PI levy and just talk about, you know, what's a number to be able to continue to maintain our, our five buildings and moving forward. So there's options. I'm not saying that we need to go back at operating costs any more than PI. I just want to know that we do need to have the discussion as a board about what's critically important to our district. But at the end of the day, we do need money. And I don't think any board member would dispute that on this board. But I also think this board, myself and Bob and our administration, you know, are working hard to at least look at each position coming in and how do we replace it and how we don't. Or not just, you know, keep, replace, replace, replace. We've also settled two contracts that were built into the forecast, so we're, we're clear of that at this time. So it's really, you know, a talking point. And I, and so I, I hope it doesn't go out there that, yes, Marlington is going at a levy and it's going to be this, because that's not what I'm saying and I'm giving no number. But I think as part of a work session, we need to be able to have an honest conversation about it. And I won't shy away from that in the township meetings either. You know, I don't want to be very transparent.
You think it's doing that after, after November, after the forecast?
So that would be a spring, we put it on in the spring of twenty four.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, the work session, you know, have a work session after the forecast, November, December, January?
I think it's important to look at all our funds, because like I said, I think as a board, you have options of what you want to do when it comes to a levy. And one way or another, we can, we can shell money one way, back and forth, any way you want to slice it, but we can't hide from inflation. wanna slice it, but we can't hide from inflation. I can cut some more, as in, anybody could, sitting in my position, but it's, it's not gonna be good for kids. But obviously, if our, but, so that by no means am I saying I wanna pass money to go ahead and say, let's, let's add 10 more teachers back that we cut, or 20 or 13 more classified staff that we got rid of. No, that's not what I'm talking about. We're not there, we just need to start continuing to build our fund balance back up, so if we wanna do something different, we can do that. And really, I keep saying it, and I'll say it and say it, 2027 is such an important year for this district, because we just, we really pay off all our debt and it gives us, it gives the board a lot more flexibility to deal with the money coming in. And if we continue to maintain what we're doing with our projects, we won't have major expenses coming back out either. So I, I applaud this, all of you honestly, and Bob, just where we're going is the right direction. It's just I knew at some point in time, we were gonna have to have this discussion when I came on. I think I talked to you guys about that even before I, you know, as I, as you interviewed me, you know, it's just, when his time is right, we'll know time's right. And, you know, first of, first and foremost, we had to really look at our staffing and what we had to do to kind of right size and do right before we just turn around and ask our community for something. Now, do we have any questions to close out? Anything you would like us to cover, come back. I know we have a board meeting next Thursday, so it'll be a much shorter meeting, because we kinda covered a lot tonight. So I guess if there's something in particular, it's why it's a work session, so talk.
I've got an off-the-wall question.
All right.
On your completed jobs and estimates here, for the first one under the high school, it says that they framed the wall, drywalled, finished, painted, hung door and put on baseboards in guidance office for calming room. What's a calming room?
So we have this, in the, in the high school guidance office, about three years ago or four years ago, if you have, you walk in, you have the secretary, Mrs. Goodwin, then you have the sitting area for students to wait, so they could go in and see Bree or Meredith, the two offices. And then as you, in that back, there's another little area that we called like the, we called it a calming room, because basically, because if we, when kids, if something would happen at home or something, you're just having a bad day, they just needed a moment to collect themselves, they could go back there and just kind of do that and go back to class. The problem with that area was it was wide open, so you always have traffic, or people can see you, you know, and maybe it's a little embarrassing. And on top of that, we do have, then, you know, we had 2.5 counselors up there, because we had Mr. Tranger from the ESC that does all our CCP. Well, he had nowhere to go, so he might be out there while somebody is grieving over something that happened at home the night before. So what we did is, they asked if we could build a wall. So if you walked in the office now, what we did is we just added a wall where the kids would kind of sit and wait to get into the guidance office if they need be, which isn't a big deal anymore, because we use passes and get them from class. And now it's a little more private, and then that gave, that opened that area back up. Good question.
I was just curious.
I, we, it's really hard to define that room. I guess the calming room is the best way to, to define it, because it's not, it could be a private room that you just meet with a parent too. It's not a, and they're not big, I'm talking, you could fit maybe a, I think in there is a, maybe a small couch this big and a little chair and that's it. I actually think they put an exercise bike in there that was donated from Darkmar, like, if somebody just needs to, just to kind of-
Get some energy.
Get some energy off, I think is in there right now. I know, we threw a lot at you, so I don't, if you got questions, feel free to reach out, as always, I, you're asked now, or that's fine. Thoughts? We try to be detailed.
Very good.
Yeah, good. Lot of work, thank you so much. And we will keep the discussion going. Communication, I like that right sizing statement. I think that's a good, good way to put it.
I think Kathy said it, or maybe it was Josh or Mark, I don't remember, but it's hard when you leave, you're just a general community member and you come to Marlington or Lake Minerva, West Branch, Alliance. I mean, if the buses are picking your kid up and your football games are going on Friday night and your volleyball games are going on and all the pomp and circumstance of starting the school year and everything's going smooth and your kids are coming home happy, as far as they're concerned, there's not a single need a district needs. You know, it's just, that's all there. You know, it's hard to see the insides of really, you know, what we tried to show tonight. And I guess that's, that's where I have to do a better job of getting that out there that, yeah, we're, we are, things are doing well for our students and it's not our students' problem. At the same time, we wanna continue to have all that good pomp and circumstance and not feel like people are, you know, having opinions about how we're operating, because we're doing good things and moving forward. And that's probably the hardest part. And you hear the word right sizing, you're gonna hear probably a lot more in the newspaper from other superintendents, because they're, they're in the same boat. As you can see on the ballot coming in November, there's gonna be some big levy numbers out there by schools. I don't wanna be in that position. We can't be in that position. So we gotta do, we, we need to look at something that's just manageable and stay manageable.
Is there, oh, we are having a meeting next Thursday night, 6:00 PM.
It's coming Thursday, 6:00 PM.
Yeah, from tonight, here in DLZ, it's our regular board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
The discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Good night, thank you.